Division of Water Resources. So those notices should have been sent out. I did not get verification whether that happened on January 14th. And so expect that, but it seems that the enforcement is going to start lower in the basement, in the basin. And so Lake County folks will have a little bit of time, but happy to have, happy to have anybody reach out with questions. Again, we are continuing to work towards getting the Lake County Augmentation Plan up and running. And so while it is not available yet and we aren't prepared to take applications, I hope that that will be an option sooner than later through this year. I also want to say there were a couple of exciting conversations that happened in the last couple of weeks regarding wildfire, community wildfire protection planning, or the CWPP as we have it, and other recreation management and facility strategic planning conversations that happened. So stay tuned for an opportunity to join those conversations. I'd like to acknowledge the City Council for considering short-term rental cap, something that I have been following. I think my fellow commissioners have also been following, but I just want to reiterate the importance that I feel and at least the feedback that I've gotten from constituents in using such a tool to help us maintain the fabric of our community and do what we can to maintain housing stock and neighborhood environment that we love living here. I suppose Commissioner Marcela may give us an update on vaccines that continue through public health? And with that, I will move on to Commissioner Fiedler.
Yeah, thanks. Maybe just one thing. I think there's been a number of sort of reports in the news about the possibility of train service reopening over Tennessee Pass, and that includes all the way down through the entirety of Lake County and through neighboring Eagle and Chiepe County. So there's no discussion on the agenda yet, but just to let everyone know that the board is paying attention to that and working, you know, having sort of informal conversations at this point with neighboring counties, with, you know, with the city, with county departments, and, you know, other individuals and organizations that have, you know, an interest or viewpoint in that. So I guess at this point, nothing to share. I think it's, you know, still very preliminary conversations or gathering of concerns and priorities, but please feel free to reach out to any of us on, you know, questions, concerns, opportunities that you may see with the possibility of either transit or local freight operations on the Tennessee Pass line. And we'll keep you posted as we get further into that sort of community discussion with the railroad lease operator.
Thank you, Commissioner Fiedler and Commissioner Mudge. I definitely want to just tag on to Commissioner Mudge's sentiments a little bit today of the enthusiasm of the events taking place in our, in our country, and it's truly monumental. And it's definitely an opportunity for us to let the light in and let the light be seen and, and know that good triumphs and honesty triumphs, and we should believe that for our nation and for our community. And so I'm really hopeful and really excited for the next chapter that we're about to embark on. And I think that we've got a lot of momentum and the wheels are turning and kind of to make a pun off of Jeff's comment, the train is rolling down the tracks already. So I'm super excited about that and can't wait to get started and get further down the road. And so with that, definitely just want to give an update on the vaccination process. I think everyone had seen in the news last week from an update from Governor Polis that we were informed that there were issues with the federal supply chain in the vaccination process. We were under the assumption that the federal government was going to continue to release vaccinations to us and found out that that might not actually be the case. And so given that there was a transition today, we're not entirely sure what to expect in the coming weeks, but have wonderful partnerships with Colorado Counties Incorporated and Lake County Public Health and CDPHG that we will be sure to disseminate information out as quickly as possible, once we know what is happening with vaccines. So with that being said, we've been acting under the assumption of historical data. And so following those historical data trends of the amount of vaccines that come into Lake County on a weekly basis and what we've been expecting for the past six weeks in vaccinations coming into our community, and then helping healthcare providers schedule appointments accordingly with the vaccines that we have historically been allocated and, and making sure that those get out into the arms of constituents as quickly as possible. So please contact Rocky Mountain Family Practice, Lake County Public Health Agency, or St. Vincent Hospital to set up an appointment if you fall in the criteria for vaccinations. We, we should, I'm sorry, just one second here. We should be able to schedule you or put you on a waitlist if, if we don't receive the amount of vaccinations that we're expected to get. So, so with that, please continue to contact them. They are in the process of contacting their patients, but be patient with us as we work through the process with all of the unknowns. I learned last week that Colorado is in the top three states in the United States from the time that we receive vaccinations from the federal supply and getting them into the arms of individuals within our community. And so we're going through that process very quickly and very strategically. And so our, our state leadership has been great at helping our local emergency management leadership get, get things rolling as quickly as possible. So I think that's all the updates I have really right now at this point. And so with that, we will move into the next section of our agenda. Next on our list is, oh, sorry, go ahead, Sarah.
No, I just, we had a comment in the chat about which agenda we are following. I just want to know, I just, can, can we look at the agenda that I used to copy that and compare that? Do we know what that looks like compared to what was posted on the website?
Sure. Give me just a minute here.
Just looking at that, I think, I think the one on the website is slightly updated and more correct because it has, the, the one that Jamie posted, yeah, has that, thank you, Sarah, that's now in the chat box, has that resolution 05, item number five.
With CMC?
And I think, and I think some, I think other than that, I think it's pretty minded. There's like some resolution numbering changes because we did actually pass some resolutions earlier, or the OCC. Yeah.
Okay, so this does have CMC. This should be the correct one. Sarah.
Okay, I apologize. I used, I used a obsolete draft. Okay, so the one, yeah, apologies. The one that Sarah Dallas shared in the chat should be accurate, I think.
Yes.
Western, and then it's missing just Western Star Plow Truck.
So the one I, the one I have has the selection of the Board of County Commissioners Chair, a resolution to update managing commissioner departments, which is 03. 02 is a draft resolution increasing landfill fees, which is the first reading, resolution to approve county holidays, resolution to partner with CMC, update and request for road opening to the Hope More Mine, update and review of conditional use permit, file number 1107, the RFP approval for tower construction at the EOC, Rocky Mountain General Counsel proposal, conversation and update from Ski Joring, contract extension for Value West, M140 motor grader, Western Star Plow Truck, and Airport Engineering Services.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, let's move into Commissioner clarifications. Commissioner Mudge, do you have any other than our clarification just now on the agenda? Sorry, guys.
No, that's all right. That's good. I don't have any clarification. Thank you.
Commissioner Fiedler?
No, that all is good.
Okay, wonderful. Apologies, everyone, for the confusion on the agenda. We're still working through, through the process of streamlining some of that stuff with, with a new board, and hopefully we'll address some of those today in our resolution for managing commissioners. Okay, and I don't have any further clarifications beyond that. And so with that, we will move into public comments on items that are not on the agenda. In this public comments section, we ask that you please sign up for public comments through the chat function on the Zoom meeting. Public comments are limited to three minutes and requested to remain respectful. Please contact the clerk should you need assistance or accommodations prior to the meeting. At this point, I will ask if you have any public comments, to please raise your hand or type into the chat that you do have a public comment. Okay, Jamie, I see that you have a public comment. If you would like to take three minutes at this point, do comment, please do so. I will start the timer. Let me get my timer. I'm sorry. Let me get my timer, and I will give you three minutes. And as soon as that timer is up, then we'll ask for your public comment to be done, but you are welcome to start.
Thank you, Commissioner Marcela. First off, I would just like to say a huge congratulations to Commissioner Fiedler on his election and to Commissioner Mudge on her reelection. I am so happy to have both of you on our Board of County Commissioners and look forward to a great term of service with all three of you excellent commissioners serving our county. I wanted to make a note that I think it's great. We have a new county website, but I think it's really bad on mobile. It just doesn't look that great. I would also like to opine that I signed up for some email notifications, and they're just not that helpful. I get a bunch of email notifications. They don't have any information in them. I have to click to a link to another thing, which is where I found the agenda. And I just think it's easy, it's an easy nut to crack to get everything a little more streamlined and make it easier for citizens like me to get information about public hearings. So I also would like to echo Commissioner Mudge and Commissioner Marcela's statements that it is so great that we don't have President Trump in the White House anymore, and I hope that our newly elected President Biden and Vice President Harris will pass some COVID legislation, which hopefully will give us lots and lots of money at county level to give to the people who need it the most. So, yeah, congrats again to the newly elected and reelected commissioners, and thanks for letting me talk.
Thanks, Jamie. Is that it for your public comment today? Wonderful. Thank you so much for that feedback. Just to, just to let you know, we were aware that we had some issues with the mobile compatibility of our website, and rather than delay the launch of that website, we went ahead and launched it knowing that we had some slight issues with the mobile site, but we are, our IT staff is working diligently with Civic Plus, the creators of the website, to make sure that that is taken care of and done in a manner that is helpful to everyone. So we, we are working on addressing that, and thank you for your feedback about navigation and what to put on there. We will take that definitely into consideration while we're working through public information officer role and make sure that that is appropriately addressed. Wonderful. Thank you so much. I definitely appreciate your comments. Does anyone else have a public comment at this point? If you'd like to raise your hand, I will call on you and, and give you three minutes as well. Okay, I am not seeing any public comment at this point. So with that, I think we will go ahead and move into the next item on our agenda and start with new business, the selection of the Board of County Commissioners Chair. For the year of 2021, I would like to make a motion that we select Commissioner Mudge as the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further conversation or discussion on the motion, Commissioner Fiedler?
No, that seems straightforward.
All right.
Well, I'll just say I appreciate not throwing me into that role right off the bat. Thank you.
Thanks.
I want to thank, I want to thank you, Commissioner Marcela, for your work in that role through 2020. And I'm, I'm happy to step in and take my turn. So thank you.
Thanks. And no further discussion from me. So all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. So with that, Commissioner Mudge, I am going to peacefully pass the torch and let you go through the rest of our new business as the Chair of the meeting today.
Very good. You know, I wonder if we should also formally appoint Vice Chair, although we just have Chair on here, if that would make some sense. And if so, I'd nominate Commissioner Marcela to act in that role. What are my fellow commissioners?
Yeah, I do, we do have that written on our, our resolution, our next resolution with board appointments, so we can formalize that there.
Okay, okay, very good. All right. So now as Chair, we'll move into item number two, a resolution. Our annual, this is our annual resolution that the board considers updating managing commissioners over departments and other appointments and certifying, certifying board appointments. I can pull that up. Maybe not. Commissioner Marcel, do you have this queued up?
Um, let me see here. I do.
And, and, and I am asking you as well, because I think you have the Word version, and I did receive a few clarifications on board members and terms for the Mineral Belt Trail and Tourism Panel and such. So if you could pull that up, that would be great.
Sure. Here's the draft that I had put together. Tourism Panel.
Okay, so we have, yeah, I have. Okay, so on the Tourism Panel, we have two seats that have, their term has ended at the end of 2020. So Steve Whittington and Colleen Schwiger's seats are up and will be posted publicly for letters of interest. Rebecca Edwards should be on there, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Word Doc, so. Yeah, Rebecca Edwards, and her term began July 2019 and will end, the Tourism Panel terms are three years, and it will end December 2021. Rich Napperstek, N-A-P-R-S-E, sorry, N-A-P-R-S-T-E-K, began the same as Rebecca, July 2019, and term ends December 2021.
Can you spell Rich's last name again, please?
You got it. N-A-P-R-S-T-E-K.
Okay. Okay.
So S-T-E-K.
S-T-E-K. Okay. Wonderful.
Elsa, Elsa Tharp.
Okay.
And that begins January 2020, ends January, or sorry, December 2022.
Okay. Is Dana Johnson still?
She is not. No. And Shannon Ferguson is not either.
Kevin Mastin?
Kevin Mastin is not either.
Okay. And there's five members. One, two, three.
Seven. Yep.
Okay, and so I have Elsa, Rebecca, Rich, two vacancies, and, and who are the other two? I'm sorry.
That's okay. Andy Wald. A-N-D-Y-W-A-L-D.
Okay.
And Carrie Malozzi, C-A-R-R-I-E-M-A-L-L-O-Z-Z-I. And I can send you those terms to, to update.
Okay.
After the meeting.
Michael Irwin, does the Airport Advisory Board look correct?
Yeah, it does. I think one of those is a fill-in or is
Alternate?
The term.
Okay.
I think Mike is, I'm, I'm not sure though.
Okay. Okay. Planning Commission looks correct. We just updated that. Mineral Belt Committee looks correct.
So the, the Planning Commission, Steve Boils, is now a vacancy. Just, just to note that.
Okay.
Mineral, oh, sorry.
Sorry. Paul, I would anticipate that we will also advertise for that vacancy, and, and Steve can reapply for that vacancy? You're not term limited on there, correct?
I, I had actually asked him if he'd like to be reappointed, and that was my intent, was to put a 2023 on that.
Paul, we need to, we, we need to advertise for vacancies, as is the nature of terms, to allow for other opportunity and for folks to.
Same thing goes then for, could you, Kayla, could you scroll back up?
Absolutely.
Lupe Babadia, his, his term also expired. So we need to scroll, scroll down. Lupe Babadia, down at the bottom.
Yeah.
I'll keep going down.
Was that because he was appointed?
He was only appointed for a year.
Okay.
So his should be vacant also then?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, and nothing, nothing prohibits them from submitting a letter of interest to continue serving?
I'll encourage them to do so.
Thank you, Paul.
Paul, can, can you please verify also that I have the correct Board of Review members on here?
Yeah, if Patty, did Patty prepare this resolution?
No, Sarah, I did.
Okay, and these are the ones that I sent you last week, maybe the week?
Yeah.
Yeah, these all, these all look correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I got everybody on there. Looks good. Fire code looks fine, correct, Paul, just fire chief and you and Board of County Commissioners?
I guess it is, yeah.
Okay. I, I see that we have Betty Benson on the line, and so I'm going to ask her a question here about the Emergency Telephone Service Authority. Betty, it looks like your term expired on 12/31/20. Do you have any, any, any idea of the membership of that?
No, I think John is going to hold a meeting yet this month.
Okay, okay. I'm going to leave the telephone authority. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Betty.
I don't know if you noticed in the chat, though, that I did offer some changes to the Mineral Belt Trail Committee. George and Rudy are no longer on that committee, and Loretta McElhenney should be added.
George and Rudy. Okay.
Commissioner Marcel, I have the updated list for the Mineral Belt also in this chat.
I cannot see it while I'm sharing my screen, so I'm going to stop sharing my screen, so I can, I can see that. Okay. All right, so I am making those adjustments to the Mineral Belt Trail Committee, and so with, with that, is there any further questions or discussion on that resolution?
Commissioner Marcel, you looked, I did send comments on that resolution to you. I'm not sure if those were included. I'm trying to pull that up as well.
Sarah, Sarah that you have listed as well in the chat for the Mineral Belt Committee?
Yeah.
Is she an alternate?
Um, I don't think so. Her name is spelled without an H. Apologies, force of habit. I, I have, I need to get clarification on terms of the Mineral Belt Trail Committee from her.
Okay. Sounds good.
I had one question, just if we're going through, on under fire protection assignments, there's a line for State Forest Service that's blank, and I wasn't sure if that needed a separate representative or if that was part of the other, you know, covered under the like Planning Board and Management Board.
I don't know.
No.
Um, I think we can, I don't know that Chief is on here. State Forest Service, I'm unsure of that.
Well, maybe, maybe just to move this resolution, maybe we could leave that blank for now, and one of my jobs on the others is I could track that down with the Chief.
Okay, I will just make a note of that, Jeff, that it will be updated. Will be updated. I'll put that on there. Weed control looked appropriate as well. Commissioner Mudge, yes?
Yes, that is correct. Here, I've just got up my
Okay.
Um, let's see. Should I share my screen real quick? Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. So I suggested moving this item lower in the
The Child Protection Team? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, those two things, just under the departments, but I don't, I don't, maybe that needs to be up there. Not, not a big deal. Just really a format thing, maybe. And then the Sales Tax Appointee, I have added Department of Revenue Memorandum of Understanding Appointee as Finance Manager.
I can make that adjustment. I can move that.
Okay.
And then I just added there. I just want to make sure I got the rest of those. If you'll just
Yeah.
Leave it right there for just a quick
I will.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right.
Okay. Okay, take maintenance off.
Yep, because currently maintenance, maintenance has been moved back onto, under Public Works. Does not stand alone as a department. So moving down, and then COG.
Yes, okay.
Yep. I didn't know if Colleen, we wanted to maintain that Public Health Director is on ex officio of some kind on Build a Generation, or if that if we wanted to.
I think that that's appropriate because of the planning and partnership that Build a Generation has with Public Health for the majority of their grants. Jeff, I know that you were part of the Build a Generation Board. Do you think that that would be a reasonable thing to leave Colleen there?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. And we can keep coordinated, you know, through, just through working with Colleen as a department head, we can keep up to date on that.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. Build a Generation will also come to us with like a quarterly update, it sounds like. Now that they've been able to be now that they've been able to be a standalone department for a while. And I am adding Larry to the to the Board of Adjustment. And I will get the term from you to add in there, too. I think that that's reflected in that email from Paul, and I will make sure that that's correct.
Yeah, Kayla, that actually, he expires in December 31, 2001.
2001. Okay. And Amy Tate should be through 2023, because we just
Yeah, you just appointed her, but you only appointed her for basically what amounts to being a year and a half, because we stagger all of these terms so that they don't all expire all at the same time.
Okay. I'll double check the terms on there to make sure that that's, that they are correct prior to the recording of this resolution.
Good.
Okay. It looks like Sarah Dallas has a question.
Thank you, Commissioner Marcela. I just had a question in regards to the fire representation by the B O C C. I see that Jeff's going to be there. Congratulations, Commissioner Fielder. I just wondered, Commissioner Marcela, if you'll still participate with the institutional knowledge in regards to Fire Station Two? And how we should communicate effectively regarding that?
Yes. So I think what we should plan on doing in that instance is me assisting Jeff with that transition to get him up to speed for a little while, so that that handoff happens fairly smoothly, if you will. I think it makes the most sense with Fire Station Two being in Jeff's district, for him to take a lead role in some of that work. So I think that he'll do a fine job on that. But for the transition period, yes, we will plan for me to attend with him to help with that transition.
Great. Absolutely agree. Couldn't concur more. And we appreciate all your due diligence. So I know there's just lots of nuance there. And happy to also have sub meetings if we need to get Commissioner Fielder up to speed. And I know that Chief Daley was trying to organize a planning and management meeting. And it sounds like he might postpone until the mayor is back in town. But I just wanted clarification. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Is there any further questions or comments on the resolution proposed?
Hey, Kayla, this is Amber. Can you go stop at Rec Advisory Board?
Yes.
Frank Mensen is no longer on the board, so you can remove him.
Okay.
Everyone else is correct.
Everyone else is correct. Okay. Let me make sure I have that right on mine as well. Okay. Do you have a vacancy with him not being on the board, Amber?
We do have a vacancy, and we had advertised, and we didn't receive any applicants. So the board just talked about needing to do some recruitment and reach out to some folks. That might be a good fit. So if anyone knows someone, or is interested, or has a suggestion, you can send a letter of interest to me.
Awesome. Thank you, Amber. I think maybe what I'll do after this is correct those terms on there for the planning and Board of Adjustment for everyone, and gather a list of those vacancies and put together an advertisement for us to publish in the paper next week, so that we have all of those board appointments advertised there appropriately. And then we can go from there in going through the vetting process and the appointment process and make that smooth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have the changes on the Watershed Advisory Council, Kayla?
Let me make sure that I do here. Yes, I have just the two on there that you had placed on there, Eric Lane and Kent Clement.
Yep.
Okay. And I have you on the Arkansas Basin Roundtable.
Yep.
And I did make a change here.
The Conflict Resolution Board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think
And this, the language at the end is also updated to reflect the appropriate Colorado Revised Statute 2 C 2 with the amendments that had been made in 2019. That is encouraging the posting of public meetings and notice to be moved to an internet web-based posting for more accessibility. So with that language from C T S I and legal, I've made that adjustment in that language as well.
Awesome. Yeah, thanks. And I think that just begs to be repeating, given our public comment. And we will do our best to mention that again and again. But yeah, the updated planners and agendas should be posted on the website as an official posting. And I think our goal will be to get those those drafts out and finalized, you know, well in advance of meetings. That will be our goal. And a final physical copy will be published on the Fridays on the week before the meetings. But I think the website is the best place to kind of get, keep yourself updated.
Yeah. We're also trying to work to make sure that we get the entire agenda packet posted as well with the agenda and the planner. So that's one of my goals in 2021, is to get that organization complete and that system and process complete with the clerks, so that we can make sure all of that information is out for public consumption prior to our meetings.
Perfect. And just before we make any formal motion, is this the third resolution of this year? Or the second? I think it should be the second. Just, right now, we have number, item number three as the listed as the second. But technically, this will be the second resolution. So 2021-02.
Um, let me, let me see here. I do believe that I have that from Patty. Have the correct resolution number. She sent it to me.
Are you sure the first resolution we did was the
The DA.
The increase to the DA. This is our second one being considered.
Yes. So we can put this as number two, and then we can change the holidays to number three.
Okay.
So that we go in chronological order according to how they were numbered on our agenda.
Very good.
Okay. Perfect.
You have any other discussion?
I do not have, I do not have anything further. Commissioner Fiedler, do you have anything further?
I guess just clarifications, and excuse me for just being new to this. So we have, like, there were one or two kind of outstanding items to clarify. And so we'll approve the resolution, you know, with the understanding of adding that information before it's officially filed.
Those are the terms, correct?
Yeah, just the terms. And then I will work with Jeff. Jeff will work on getting the State Forest Service information nailed down. And so I will plan on putting this back on our agenda for our second Commissioner meeting in February, which should be here, which should be February 15. And I believe that we are closed that day, so it's February 16. So we'll plan on revisiting this February 16 and have a goal to have that Forest Service information maybe updated by then, so that we can ratify.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve Resolution 2021-02 with the corrected terms for the boards updated for county board and position appointments.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discuss?
Any further discussions? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Sarah.
I know, I know. This always happens. That's all right. Seems to be a clumsy first meeting, but that's okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
None for me. Thank you.
Okay. All right, great. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Great. Unanimous vote of approval. And we'll move on to item number three, which is a draft resolution with the intent of having a first reading here and bringing it to our next meeting for a final decision on. And so I will pull this up and read it into the record. And then if my fellow commissioners agree, I'd like to open open offer any public comment on the resolution on the landfill. Yeah. Okay. So this is a draft resolution regarding the use and fees for Lake County landfill, whereas the Board of County Commissioners determines and declares it is necessary and proper to provide for the safety, preserve the health, promote the prosperity, and improve the order, comfort, and convenience of the County of Lake. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners owns and operates a solid waste disposal site for the deposit of refuse and is empowered to do so pursuant to 30-11-107 1 K C R S. And whereas the Lake County Resolution Number 1539 amended the use and fees and certain regulations for the use of Lake County landfill set forth in Exhibit B of Lake County Resolution Number 1539. And whereas, after a public hearing, the board oh well, has determined that some of the fees and certain regulations for the use of the Lake County landfill should be adjusted, modified, and revised as identified in the attached Exhibits A and B. I'm not quite sure we have Exhibits A and B, because I think the list is very short of the changes for fees. There are only three. Whereas the board, upon conducting said public hearing, now determines the adoption of the fees and certain regulations set forth within the attached exhibits would be in the best interest of the county and its residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Colorado. Section 1, the Board of County Commissioners approves and adopts the fees and certain regulations for use of the Lake County landfill as set forth within the attached Exhibits A and B. Section 2, all fees and regulations previously adopted by the board for the use and operation of Lake County landfill, which are inconsistent with this resolution, are hereby repealed and rescinded. Section 3, notwithstanding and of the provisions contained within this resolution or its exhibits, the board hereby reserves the right to waive in full or in part landfill fees and or regulations for the certain public community events or programs promoting the cleanup of Lake County. Such waiver or partial waiver of fees to be approved by the board at any regular or special meeting. Section 4, the resolution shall be effective upon its adoption. However, the fee schedule, as is set forth in Exhibit A, will take effect on March 1, 2021. Section 5, a certified copy of this resolution shall be posted in the bulletin board located in the lobby of Lake County Courthouse and published in the Herald Democrat, a newspaper of general circulation within Lake County. So again, this is what should be included in Exhibits A and B are an increase that you see here. County residents compact, or non-compacted trash will change, the intention is to change and increase to $20 from 15. Compact trash, the intention is to increase to $35 from $30 and increase the price of trash bags, the yellow bags, from $5 to $6. The change, I think Michael Irwin is on here. Michael, can you speak to, is that a change on the matrix?
That's because it's calculated out to a cubic yard. So since a cubic yard up on the top was $20, we carried that down to that, too.
Okay.
Consistent.
Okay. Very good.
Michael, I know that we had worked on this with our previous board. So is there any additional background information that we can give to Commissioner Fiedler to talk through kind of the thought process that we were anticipating taking with landfill fees? And the reasoning for that, because of the capital improvements that need to be done at the landfill?
Yes, the major ones that need to be done or that we're looking at, is we've got a three-year cell that we're about ready to open up. And once that three-year cell, or that three-year time period ends, we have to probably line the landfill, the next cell coming up. So we need to be able to pay for that, you know, and have the money ready and ready to go for that. It's about $850,000 that we're looking at. And that's just the price for today, an estimated price at today's rate. So that's what increasing landfill fees is basically geared towards doing, is to pay for that next cell, so that we don't have to close the landfill and be forced to transfer our trash to another county, which would be way more expensive than any fee that we could have in the county.
Yep. Yeah, again, the fees collected today do not cover the O and M operation and maintenance of the landfill operations currently. And as Michael stated, with anticipation of further requirements that may be coming from C D P H E, the fees, the intention is for the fees to cover those O and M costs and construction. So I'd like to give a moment to offer any public comments or questions on this first reading of this resolution. We are not making a formal decision on this resolution today.
Just quickly, on Section 5, I wonder if we would want to specifically say posting on the new county website as well? I mean, I think
We might just include that in the county website.
I think that's a great idea. Michael, I do have one question. And I do see that we do have a question in the comments as well. The increase in the bags from $5 to $6, is there an increased cost from the manufacturer or the vendor that we order those bags from? And is $6 enough to cover that if there is one? Or is the $6, the $6 is just in in line proportionately with what we're increasing the fees for the cubic yards, correct?
Yes, we just made Um, yes, we just made another order of those bags and the manufacturer decided to give us the same price that they did January of last year.
Okay.
So we're not, the price did not go up for the bags themselves. Um, the dollar was, is just to go towards, um, landfill expansion.
And to comment on a question in the chat about the projected revenue generation, we have, um, discussed this as a board in work sessions before and Michael, uh, Public Works brought to us a table. And, uh, annually, I believe the projected revenue generation was approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars, Michael. Um, so just covering what we might anticipate as construction costs, should we have to mine that, um, four acre cell, that next cell? Um, and for further clarification, um, each new cell is going to be a smaller acreage. Um, and so we will have to, or, or we could anticipate having to do, um, this, uh, lining uh, every three or four years, um, as, as we utilize, continue to utilize the landfill.
Yeah, and, and on that, you know, every cell from there should have to be lined. Um, but once we get the bottom line, you know, the landfill will expand up instead of out. Uh, so. Paying for those expansions, those, those first expansions is the biggest thing, but future expansion is going to go up. So everything should be taken care of.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Right?
Okay. Um, I think what we'll want to do, Commissioner Maj, at this point is, um, what I would suggest anyway is to put that draft up on our county website. Um, maybe if anybody has any questions or comments on that draft, can you please email Michael Irwin and, um, commissioners@co.lake.co.us. Then your public, your comments will come into all of us. Um, that goes into a general mailbox that the three of us receive all of those questions and comments to. Um, so I, I would encourage people to share that widely with friends and family that that has the potential to take place. Again, no formal decision was made on that today, but, um, that's part of what we'd want to do through this process is solicit as much public comment and feedback on that proposal as possible. So please share it.
We will do that. Yes. Good suggestion, Commissioner Marcel. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, do we have, uh, if we don't have any further discussion on item three, we can move to item four on our agenda.
Sounds good. I don't have anything further.
Okay. Trying to, um, uh, look through this Zoom to and kind of manage some of that feedback we're hearing. Okay, uh, hearing no further comment on item three, the draft, uh, the reading of the draft and resolution for landfill fee increase. We'll move on to item number four, um, a resolution to approve county holidays for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Commissioner Marcel, do you have, um, this to pull up as well?
Yes.
I do not.
So, uh, here is the resolution for, um, and this should be changed, I believe, to three to three. Um, uh, so this is, uh, the holiday observation for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Um, I have incorporated Francis Xavier Cabrini Day as it is observed by the state of Colorado and the courts. Um. In and replaced Columbus Day with that day. Um, it's the Monday prior to Columbus Day, the state no longer observes Columbus Day. Um, and they observe Francis Xavier Cabrini Day. Um, and so uh, operationally, it makes sense. Um.
To be in alignment.
Yeah.
I, I think that sounds good. Thank you for correcting that. Or adjusting. Any comments there, Commissioner Fiedler? I don't know where.
Sorry.
Okay. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero-three. Um. Observe with, uh, for the observation of holidays for the county in years twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
Uh, I'll move that we progress in twenty twenty-one dash oh-three, just the observation of holidays for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
Okay. I will second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
None from, none for me. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I have, I have nothing there either. Hey, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. All right. And we will move on to item five, um, which is, so I'm trying to pull up the um, resolution to partner with Colorado Mountain College in applying for and distributing the Colorado Opportunity Scholarship Program Funds. Uh, this is an annual, uh, partnership and the CMC, uh, we need to partner with them, um, to apply for these funds through the state, um, for them to offer. Are there any questions on that? Um, I am. I don't have that resolution available to pull up at the moment, but I don't have anything. Um, this is relatively straightforward unless, uh, Commissioner Marcel or Commissioner Fiedler, you have any um, pieces you'd like to discuss on there?
Not for me. That looked very straightforward.
Okay.
Yeah, none, none for me either.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-one dash zero-five, a resolution to partner with Colorado Mountain College and applying for and distribute, distributing the Colorado Opportunity Scholarship COSI Twenty Twenty dash Twenty Twenty-One Matching Funds Scholarship.
Just. Sorry, just, uh, are, is it, is that changing to dash oh-four?
Yes, it should be the fourth.
Yes. Okay, uh, uh, my apologies. I will amend my motion to reflect it as Resolution Twenty Twenty-one dash zero-four.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion?
None for me. Thank you.
All right. Doesn't sound like any further from Jeff. Uh, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Commissioner Fiedler?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. And we'll move on to item six. Um, so item number six, we have an update. Um, on, uh, a request that we've had through Public Works regarding the Hope More Mine and, um, potential, uh, new, I suppose I will say, uh, operations at the mine. Um, the original request came in, um, to plow County Road One A, um, which is Fifth Street heading up the east side. And so we've invited representatives here, um, so that we could, the board could hear, uh, what the plans might be and, um, understand, uh, what, what is, what all is being requested of the county. Uh, looks like Gary Slivka is here as a representative. Uh, Michael Irwin, do you have any other comments, um, or introductions um, to make on folks that have joined us today?
No, I'm not actually sure who all did show up. Um, I'm not sure who Travis Snyder is.
Okay, well, with that, I will ask, uh, I see Gary's ready, ready to speak. And so Gary, would you give us, uh, would you introduce yourself and, uh, give us, um, a little bit of background on, um, what's going on with the property?
Again, uh, the Hope More Mine, uh, is a very old mine. It was rehabbed in nineteen eighty-five. It changed multiple times and it most currently sold to a company called CJK Milling Company. I work for Union Milling Contractors that is going to be the operator, uh, of the, of the mine. Um, but I gotta step back. Nothing is changing up there. We're just in a weird, uh, set of times. Um, Excel Energy had problems with their transmission line. So they graciously threw, uh, flew in thirty brand-new power poles and gave us power. We just got that back, uh, finished at the end of October. Normally the mine would be shut down and winterized, uh, right at that time. Having said so, as a new owner, uh, we'd like to, no one's been underground for a year and a half. And we just want to get back underground, uh, do the, the annual maintenance that normally happens. And again, we originally requested for you guys to open that road up. Um, there were some discussions with, uh, uh, planning and, and Paul Clarkson. We went ahead and opened the road up a week ago. Four days ago. We would really appreciate the assistance of keeping it open.
So Gary, uh, my understanding is, uh, that there is currently a DMRS state permit for mining up there. Um, but the Hope More Mine has been opened and operating as a tourist mine for, uh, for tours alone. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, when Bob Calder purchased the mine, it was from a company called Capital Gold. They did not want any competition with Bob opening the mine. So there was a five-year hiatus of Bob being allowed to mine. That has, that permit's been kept up. So it's a one-ten-two underground permit, uh, seventy thousand tons or less a year. Um, but it's just, uh, it's been under the tour mine establishment, not, um, not operating as a, a, um, operating mine.
And so are there any, um, are there any changes or, uh, notifications, um, through the state? And I think that, that, that was the intent of asking you all to come here today, um, to talk to the board so that we could understand, you know, just what the long-term intention is and, um, what are some of those, uh, what's, what's the checklist that we, uh, will need to go through? Um, to consider, uh, the requests and, and or comply, um, for your purposes.
Yes, again, the, the one-ten permit has been transferred from Capital Gold to Bob Calder. Bob operated the mine or the permit under Lockland. Lockland now is being transferred into CJK Milling. I am ninety-nine percent done with that transfer. It's a succession of operator permit. And essentially what it is, there's a forty-two thousand dollar bond that's held at, uh, First Mountain Bank. And you just go through a transfer, uh, package. Nothing to, well, that has, that's where it goes, uh, the update from Bob to CJK. No, we're not changing anything, um, like I said.
Okay. And Gary, how does this relate to, um, the mill south of town?
Um, CJK Milling Company also owns, uh, the Union Milling Mill. It's referred to as the Leadville Mill. Uh, whether the mine will ever go back into production has yet to be determined. Uh, in one of the letters to Paul, and I think that's maybe where, uh, there were some misunderstandings. We do want to, uh, do some exploration drilling. Um, whether that's allowable as the current conditional use, if it's not, we do, uh, plan and intend to update that CUP to allow that exploration. Again, you know, you won't see anything on the surface. Everything is underground. And again, it's kind of interesting that, uh, this CJK Milling has came into town. I do want to point out that we do control or CJK controls over nine hundred acres at the present time. Um, we do hope that our taxes for all of the mining claims aids in, in Lake County.
So Gary, I, I apologize. The, so the, I, the intent thus far on the Hope More Mine site, um, is is, um, I'm sorry, I'm just reading, uh, chat. Um. The intent is to do some exploration, uh, which we have yet to understand whether that, we need to amend a CUP for that site or not. Um, and that is where the request for the county to plow the road up to the site comes from?
Not the exploration. The first task is just to do the, the maintenance. Since no one's been down that, um, we just need to get into the mine, check all the, um, structures, uh, do some of the electrical work that has not been done. And then again, in an effort, the tours could start, uh, in June. Uh, it'll only be a handful of guys going up today. Guys are at the mine today.
Okay. Um, cause we, you know, I, I just want to be clear and I thi- I think the, the, um, this has been communicated to you probably, but, um, you know, there, there is a large impact on, uh, what has, um, typically been utilized as far as the county roads and the recreation impact up there. So we, we have met with the snowmobile club to try to remedy, um, and, and see if we could, um, replace mileage lost, um, for their purposes. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure if that was clarified, um, to the group. Um, certainly you have, you have certain rights to access your property. I just want to make sure that that's, that's shared, that there's a greater impact, um, that we've, you know, been getting a lot of feedback on and been trying to, um, resolve as well.
You know, that didn't come up with us. Um, after I heard about it, I just assumed being from Leadville and, and having a snowmobile, that the guys, if they're traveling from Leadville, they can just go up Seventh Street, loop back around and be above the Hope More and would not be impacted. We're not blocking their access. Um, whether they want to ride on gravel for about a mile and a quarter, yeah, I understand their problem.
Okay. Um, Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Um, I know our environmental council had to, uh, leave this meeting earlier. Um, Michael Irwin from Public Works.
The only thing I got to say is, you know, I drove up there today. Um, if the county does open that road, it's going to have to be open because it's a county road and the way it's plowed right now. When it starts melting, it will run down the center of the road and wash out that road. And we just replaced all the gravel on that like two years ago. I don't want to deal with that expense of replacing that gravel. It would have to be completely ditched to the edge of the road plowed, um, so the water does not sit or run down that, that steep, the steep hills up there. Um, especially above Adelaide Park.
Yeah. Yeah. My, thank you, Michael. My understanding is that, uh, Public Works did ask and, and direct you all not to uh, plow that road yet. Um, so for clarification, Public Works has not plowed that road. Um, you all had, uh, taken amongst yourselves to plow that road. So I, I definitely, um, if nothing else, we need to have, uh, certain expectations and, and, uh, operating, you know, seasonal, uh, expectations outlined, um, between the owner and Public Works so that we're sure to, to maintain an asset and the level of public safety um, up there that's needed.
No, we'd definitely like to work with Mike and his guys on it, uh, that road, you know, just to give you a little history. you know, just to give you a little history, that road was open from nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen ninety-nine, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Again, there's ample snowmobiling uh in the area. We really don't want to, you know, upset any group or any individual.
Hey, Paul, this is, this is, sorry, Jeff, go ahead. I'll go after you.
Okay, thanks. I um just, I was curious, I, Gary, for the maintenance work, is that going to extend like in sort of off and on through June or are they, what, what, what's the time window that that could be done in, you know, just so we can start figuring out how to get you access? Uh I, you know, I guess where I'm going with that is I'm curious if there's a way to get that done fast and sort of open the road, you know, for a limited period of time and then, you know, dial back and Mike would appreciate your input, whether, I mean, if we could get in there for a short period of time and then let the snow cover up again, so we don't have that, you know, meltout drainage damage issue to deal with.
Well, that's a good question. Uh Bob usually asks the county to go in there mid-April. So no, I think we would want it uh maintained throughout the winter. Uh again, we, we have a big unknown about, I don't have a specific laundry list of the maintenance items. We have not been down there. Uh I'm just anticipating that much work.
Yeah, okay.
Uh it is a time uh in the year where that, the water in the mine is at the lowest. That's another interest that we want to be in there this time of year.
So do we need to revisit um through land use? Planning Commission perhaps, but the, the conditional use permit um at a later date, and I suppose that might come in the fall time after you all have done your assessment and uh of, of the condition of the mine for what, what you would, what you propose to uh have in operations up there?
That'd be a fair thing. If uh the conditional use permit is for the tour mine, the maintenance is for the tour mine. And then again, if we decide um the mining permit does allow for the exploration, um having said so, uh it's gonna take five or six months to do anything up there. Um I just really didn't think it would be that big of an impact.
I, I think that's where my question comes in. Paul, you might be able to answer this. Um it was sparked by a comment that was put in the chat about updating the CUP um and asking that the CUP be amended. Can you speak a little bit to the CUP that currently exists for that operation?
To the best of my knowledge, hi. Um I, I don't, I'm not aware, Gary, that the existing permit for the tourist mine uh includes exploration, but I have the permit here in front of me and I will have a closer look and um be able to let you know. But if at some point you do want to do some hard rock mining, you will need to either, you'll need to get a new spec- a conditional use permit. And that doesn't-
We, uh, we understand that, Paul.
Yeah. Um, I figured you did. And I think that it sounds like you might want to maintain the tourist aspect of this mine as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, just for anybody that wants to know, there's only two shaft tour mines in the state of Colorado. And it is allowable that you conduct tours while you're mining. You just cannot set off any explosives while tours are underground, only, only the miners. And that's doable. Whether that will happen, I, I don't know.
So it might be in your best interest to not amend the permit as much as get a new one?
Well, I don't have to do anything for the mining permit. It's a one-ten-two. I can do tours and I can do mining. It's just the CUP would have to be updated.
Well, that's exactly what I said. Um, I'm talking about having two conditional use permits because we don't have an updating procedure. We don't have a procedure by which one can amend a use permit. So what I'm thinking here is that you eventually, you do mine it, you're gonna want to have two condi-
That's a good idea, Paul, that uh we can head down that road, sure.
I think that's what we're looking at. Um and I'll look in, look in this current CUP to see if um exploration is included in this um tourist mine.
Thank you.
Okay, I apologize, everyone. I lost internet service there for a second. Um but it sounds like we're landing on further communication and working with uh Landuse on uh amending a conditional use permit and or um initiating uh new application or two um for the purpose of this. And Michael Irwin with uh as far as Public Works goes and further clearing that road right now, um what are the next couple of steps that we need to work together on? Um I see your comment. We can keep it open with some work, um but it won't be a priority route. So um I would say as long as Gary and or other uh appropriate folks uh from property owners can communicate uh at great length with Michael um and Public Works can kind of set the, the stage for how that road needs to be properly plowed um to maintain uh the road as an infrastructure and the safety up there. We can move forward.
They just need to know also that once we plow that, we'll have to make a parking turnaround up there by the mine someplace. Um normally that's at the intersection of County Road Thirty-Eight and County Road One. Um, cause once we plow it, people are gonna go up there. You can put road close signs or whatever, but they're gonna be up there. And if you're gonna give them access to that, you know, to haul a trailer and a snowmobile up there, um we need to have a place to turn them around and get them out too, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, and Gary, for your information, that the concern, um what, what the impact uh to the snowmobile club is that they get paid, their, their revenue generation um from OHV uh funds, they get paid one way. And plowing that road eliminates a number of loops that they are able to do. Um not only, a- and I don't think that they can bring the cat either um on that. They wouldn't want to drive the cat for a mile. So, so that's how uh it impacts approximately half of their budget and the revenue that they generate from plowing um the county roads up there. Um the other concern is the now uh greater access for perhaps less experienced recreationalists going up um and, and the safety concerns um with that access. So as Michael said, I, I do think that you'll see quite a bit of um traffic going up there. Um and uh Will, we've talked about what kind of signage um uh in addition to posting um this perhaps in the paper and on the website as a, as a, an item and something for folks to look out for. But if you all could, Michael, when, what kind of timeframe would you like to see? Uh if you could set up a meeting and figure out how to, how Public Works can get up there um to plow, um if at all. Sooner than later, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be up three in the morning to see. We can get something worked out. Um at least get the grader up there or one of the loaders anyways to get, get it better cleaned out. Right now, it's a trench, so I gotta get, get it widened. I gotta get it off the road.
Okay. Gary, do you have a set of, have you shared a set of documents or information with Landuse yet that we could review? Or um would you be able to do that for us?
I'd be happy to do that with them. Um the whole intent uh is just to keep in compliance with the, the CUP items or the items under the CUP uh standardized as much as possible, but uh Paul and uh his staff have been very helpful.
Okay, do we all have a couple items, marching orders in test to to get to between Landuse and-
Sorry, Sarah, I did not mean to-
That's okay. That's all right.
I, I just want to make sure that I um appropriately follow up for this, on this for us. Um Paul, I think you'll review the, the CUP process with Gary and then if that needs to go through any additional processing on the CUP, Landuse side, you will do that with the planning commission and then that will come to us.
Well, that's the typical procedure, yeah.
Okay.
I would anticipate, and Gary, you might chime in here, that at some point in time, the Hope More Mine is gonna do mining, right?
Um, that would be a, a, a high probability, yes.
Okay, well, at that point, um Gary and I will, and Nick, Michael probably, and Harry Nippa, Bob um Calder, will all start about how to do a conditional permit for hard rock mining. And I believe that this permit for hard rock mining already exists.
Yes.
Gary, I'm not sure we explicitly asked the question, but is it possible that the, the further plowing of the road for this season could be postponed at all so that um the recreation up there, we could have a little more time for planning?
Well, I've got subcontractors coming in any day now. Um that's why we plowed it to begin with.
Okay. All right.
I don't know if there's a possibility of a motor grader wing making a shelf on one side of the road or the other so that a snowmobile could jump up there and travel around. I, I don't know.
Yeah, no, we, we've kind of talked about some alternatives and possibly looking at plowing half the road with the snowmobile club. Um but that typically just really doesn't work in practice, so um we'll uh, let's, let's uh aim for at least an update on this item at our next meeting um and see where communications and the document sharing is um between Landuse and Public, uh Public Works. Um then we'll, we'll just keep working from there.
No, thank you for having us. Um Nick will address the, the next uh agenda item.
Okay. Uh any further discussion on uh the Hope More Mine agenda item here?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think I have uh any further discussion. Um can we potentially put this on our February first meeting to have Michael Irwin just give us an update of what, if anything, has happened by that time period?
Yeah. Let's do that. Okay. Write that down. Okay. Um. All right, let's see. And number seven, moving into, if there are no further comments, uh moving into item seven on business, an update and review of the conditional use permit, file number eleven dash zero seven for the Crystal Mill operations. Um Paul, would you like to lead this discussion or Commissioner Marcel? I know you, I think you both um were having some detailed conversations about this.
Um sure. I would be happy to uh start the conversation and Paul, you can, you can jump in as you'd like.
Okay.
Um, so we uh, the, the con- the conditional use permit on the Crystal Mill Mine Operation, file eleven dash zero seven um was approved back in twenty fifteen. The approval of the CUP says that um the Board of County Commissioners will do an annual update or have an annual update on the property and uh the work that's being done in the milling operation there. Um and it also says that the board will be notified and do a review um if there's a change in ownership. And so there was a change in ownership back in April of twenty twenty, um I believe is when we were notified of the change in ownership. Um however, at, at that time, in April of twenty twenty, we were not doing much other than responding to uh the pandemic at that point. Um and so there's been some concerns uh from adjacent property owners um at that location. And so with that, um I felt that it was necessary and appropriate for us to have a conversation about the operations and the change in ownership um on that CUP and is also required under, under the permit um that we do that. So um I can hand it over to Paul and he can give us an update of any kind of information that he might know at this point, and then we can go from there.
Um, I'd be happy to interject a couple of things here. Uh one of them being that there has been a mill on that site, I think, since nineteen ninety-nine. Um and uh and it was permitted, I think initially, under a conditional use permit as the Leadville Mine. Um and then it got amended in twenty eleven as the Union Mill. And um and then we had reason because of things that Nick Michael might be able to speak to better. Um there were a couple of conditions of that two thousand eleven um permit that were nearly impossible for him to comply with, given the circumstances. So we brought it back to the uh Planning Commission for discussion and it was staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission, uh according to the code, uh the only way you can really amend a permit is for the Planning Commission to actually deny it or recommend denial of it to the Board of County Commissioners. And then the Board of County Commissioners can act on it by either doing the same thing or by amending conditions, which is what the Board of County Commissioner did back in twenty fifteen. Uh so there has been a mill and I don't, it hasn't been operating, I, I don't think, at least since twenty eleven. Nick might be able to contradict that, but I believe it did operate as the Leadville Mill throughout the two, the, much of the two thousands. Um, and we'll say-
If I, if I can correct, if I can interject there, the-
Yeah, go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted ju- just to be clear and I just, pardon me for, for, for interjecting here. The, the mill operated in the late nineties and into the early two thousands. And since about two thousand or two thousand and one, the mill has not operated. Just, just to be clear for, for everyone.
So it goes back even a little further than I had been able to find out. Um, it's been um, uh the, the, I think that the Union Milling LLC has put quite a bit of money into this site um in order to get it to a point where it can be used. Um, one of the conditions of the Board of County Commissioners was to um will review the CUP annually or on any change of ownership or conversion to a custom mill. Um, last May, uh, uh not April, Kayla, but last May, we were notified by Nick that uh CJK is taking ownership. Um I forwarded that to the Board of County Commissioners, but as they say, they were very busy with COVID and uh they, and so are we. And the, the process, it, it doesn't say that there needs to be a hearing or a meeting. It just needs that it be reviewed and that could be the Board of County Commissioners looking at it and not doing anything. Um, which is pretty much the way this has operated since I've been uh the Director of this Department. Which is pretty much the way this has operated since I've been the Director of this department for for that particular mill. I, and Nick also provided me with a, one of his annual reviews in September and every September prior to that. And I previously had forwarded those to the Board of County Commissioners and I come to find that I probably did not forward that one, that particular one. So, which may have been more important simply because that the change of ownership had had occurred. So I have provided the Board of County Commissioners with both letters at this point in time. The the one that describes the annual position of of the of the mill by Nick Michael and then also the May 22nd letter concerning the change in ownership. And I believe, Nick, that your firm is going to continue advising?
That's correct, Paul. So so we transferred ownership, we closed, as as Paul said, and 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 sold our entire asset to CJK Milling. And so so at this point, what Union Milling Contractors is doing is is just working as an independent contractor, if you will, continuing on activities to improve the mill. And as as Gary just talked about a little while ago, to to get the mine up and running and and also to process some of the the low grade dump materials that that also exist up on Breeze Hill. So that is a, our plan going forward. And if I might just go back just a little bit, just to get everyone in the right, you know, to kind of give a kind of a a history here to for perspective and for context. We had purchased the mill in 2008 and our initial plan was to tie it to the Hopemore Mine and another mine that was in Boulder County to be a, to process that material, to to process material from primarily the mine, the Crossing Caribbean Mine, which is located in Boulder County. That was our original plan back in 2008. As as you recall, if you recall, in mining, the the gold price was not favorable during that period of time. It just before gold took off again and and we had some difficulties raising funding. You know, and 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 it became very difficult to to fund two separate projects that kind of depended on each other. So that plan didn't work out, although we thought, we thought we had that money lined up to do that that funding. So we we took a step back after that and in around 2011, 2012, as you say, we 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 decided that, look, you know, what we really need to do is look internally, look within Lake County here and and see, we can, we can look at a different approach. And what we came up with was there's, there's a lot of material that that already exists on the surface. So so instead of being miners, let's change our our business model and 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 really look at what we can do locally. And right about that time, as you're, as you recall, Paul, we had that other CUP hearing, I think it was 2015, that that we have that. And and a lot of the residents, you know, came and voiced their concerns and the primary concern is water quality and the environment. And we looked at it and and one of the guys in in our group said, you know, why don't we just, why don't we just try to help everybody here and consider processing some of the the material that's already been mined and sitting on the surface, leaching into the, leaching into the, into the watersheds. And and so we started pursuing that business model and that's the business model that we have today. So so in our, in our near term plan, what what our goal is is to treat that material that that's been on the surface since, you know, the 1800s, the late 1800s. And and because that material contains valuable metals that weren't economically processable back in the day, but are today, we can kind of kill two birds with one stone, kind of clean up, clean up the area up there and and have a, have a milling operation. And our our new owner, Gary Knippa, who was CJK Milling, saw that and liked the idea and said, you know, I'll, I'll pursue that idea. And then we made a deal and that's the deal that we thought we closed when we purchased the mine. So today, we are in the process of doing yet again another amendment to our permit. So as Paul, and it really is a really good segue, as Paul mentioned, in 2011, we had to do an amendment to our permit to to continue on from what was done prior to 2008. And that amendment required the county planning commissioners to look at our plan and then approve it and then the county commissioners to look at the plan that was approved by the planning commissioners. And and then that was approved by the commissioners and that is the CUP 1107 that you guys see today. So the the thing that's really important, Commissioner Mudge and everyone is, we are right now in the throes of updating our permit because we want to operate differently than what we are permitted to do right now. So so we are in the process of doing an amendment to our permit with the state of Colorado. And the reason I kind of emphasize amendment because amendment is an important thing, right? So what an amendment means is that we're doing something materially different than what we are permitted to do. And to to materially change what we want to do, we have to have another public hearing. We have to, by state law, approach the county commissioners and and the planning commissioners, but really the county commissioners and say, Lake County Commissioners, we want to change what we want to do and here is our plan in detail of what we plan to do. At that point, you review that information and and then, like Paul said, that opens the door to reset the 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 conditions. So we're going to have to have a new county or conditional use permit. That has to happen before the state will allow us to operate. And and so this is, you know, this is a little premature, but I think it's kind of fortuitous that we're having this meeting because it kind of gives you a heads up of what is coming.
Absolutely. Thank you, Nick. I think I I I was going to attempt to summarize for everyone's sake that this, this conversation here really was intended to get everyone on the same page because different departments have been communicating with folks and and there's a lot of speculation, you know, getting thrown around. So so to boil it down to the fact that on both accounts, likely on the east side property, the Hopemore Mine and and the mill site, there will be a public process that we will be going through for the the development and planning of the uses on on those properties.
Correct. And Commissioner Mudge, early, that one of the first questions you posed to Gary was, you do, does, does the mine have to do anything different from CDRMS? The mine does not have to amend its permit because they are already permitted to mine ore. However, the 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 Hopemore does need to get a TR, a technical revision from the state, which is not an amendment. So it's not a material change in operation because they're already permitted to do that. So so the technical revision is a administrative thing. You just write, and I'm simplifying it, but but it really isn't more complicated than that. You write a letter to the state and say, we are changing. Remember, remember a tour mine, but now we're going to change and be a tour mine and do exploration. So and then the state says, okay, you're permitted to do that. You're you're permitted. It's okay. And 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 it'll be that. However, commissioners, if the 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 exploration that we would like to do up there is not in the conditional use permit, it, that will need to be opened up and that will need to be presented as well. And and I'm being very clear here because it's the rules and 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 the rules state that this needs to happen. So this is what we're going to do. But what I like to emphasize to everyone listening, we're, we're almost there, everyone. We're almost ready to submit this information to the county, to the state and to the county, but we're just not there yet. But, you know, we're very excited and what we're, we're wanting to do here. Again, it's a remediation plan and and it is something that we think is going to be beneficial overall to the community. Because our, our plan is to to really in the short term to come in and 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 clean up a lot of these, a lot of these piles that have been, you know, just kind of leaching into Evans Gulch and all the other, all the other waterways. Clearly not all of them, but it's something that that we found that we can do economically. And and so that's, that is our business model. And and again, we hope to share it with the whole community here very, very soon.
Okay. Thanks, Nick. And I see a hand raised. Before I call on that, Nick, could you, could you just give us a a formal introduction?
Yeah, yes. Okay. My name is Nick Michael and I and I live in Littleton, Colorado. I'm a mining engineer by degree and I worked in that industry my entire career. And I got involved with this again in 2007, 2008 timeframe, long, long time ago. And
Okay.
Yeah, I hope that's it.
That's great. Yes, Gary.
Gary Knippa, I just wanted to pipe in and introduce myself. My wife and I have CJK Milling and, you know, I I don't have a background in mining or milling. But Nick's was looking for an investor and and we really were drawn to this investment because, as Nick mentioned, it's a viable business model, but it's also going a long way to clean up the environment up there. And we're excited about that. And just wanted to introduce myself and, you know, we've made a significant investment in in the mill as well as, as Gary mentioned previously, we've purchased quite a few of the, or a number of mining claims, primarily the ones that have these ore piles, dumps on them for the purposes of of processing those through the mill. So I just wanted to introduce myself and we're happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Gary. Uh, you're titled as Smith D. on here. I see your hand raised. Do you want to make a comment? And would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Diane Smith. My husband and I live on County Road 36. I disagree with a lot of what Nick said, but that's neither here nor there. Here's what our our problem has been and you'll see our names plus another, a number of other ones that we sent a number of questions to all of you. Our our main concern, which I think is a very simple one for Nick and Gary to address and you and and you, Commissioner, were talking about a lot of rumors and people talking different departments. The problem is there's milling and there's whatever they're talking about. And the problem is Nick may think he was clear, but I still have no clue what Nick says he's doing up there or what the company's doing up there. Milling to to actually run that as a mill and this all, this is back from 2015. We hired a lawyer. We had a whole lot of research done. There is no, there's not enough water to run that as a mill, as the term is commonly known, in terms of dealing with the gold. So I'm taking it that Nick is saying, and I'm speaking just for me, but I think I've got the support of most of my neighbors. What we can't figure out is what Nick's doing with the mill. Is he going to have trucks coming in from other, from other mines with with gold to be milled? Or is he talking about doing this ground thing, which we've seen when you go over to Twin Lakes and you see the, you know, what's going on over there in terms of staying above ground, doing, doing that kind of processing? That's what we don't understand. And we've been asking and asking and asking. All we really need to know, commissioners, and I thank you for your time, is specifically, you know, don't send a letter saying we're going to improve everything environmentally. None of us know what that means. We, we need to know whether they want to run a mill, in which case we have one position, or if they're doing something else, in which case we may have another position. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diane. And and my reaction to that would simply be that all of those details, it it has become clear to me, will now be vetted and heard through a process with the amended and or new applications for conditional use permitting and residents and neighbors, property owners in the adjacent area will have the the opportunity to, again, give your public comments to the planning commission and or the board, at least. So let's, let's not get into a greater debate on that. Commissioner Marcel, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Mudge. I I just wanted to make sure that we, we were following the narrative of the CUP for file 1107. And so with that CUP, Paul, now this CUP will be irrelevant because they will reapply for a completely new conditional use permit because that is required by the state, correct?
No, it's required by our code.
By our code, okay. And so, and so this process, these neighboring and adjacent property owners will be contacted through through the radius that we use when anybody applies for a conditional use permit. And so they will be given ample opportunity to vet their concerns prior to the permit being, being potentially issued and approved by the Planning Commission and then by the BOCC, correct?
Correct. I also mention that I I've, I've worked with Nick now for, what Nick gets going on six years now, I think, right? That, and and the Garry's, I think, might like to actually provide the the neighborhood a tour of the facility. What do you think, Nick?
Absolutely. We, 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 we'd like to be transparent and 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 we do want to address everyone's concerns. And and we do, we open our our mill up for tourists, you know, not more than two or three people at a time, but absolutely, we would invite anyone, the neighbors or anyone in the community to come see what we're doing at the mill and and also up on Breeze Hill. And we'll show you what what we're wanting to do up there as well. We're, again, we're, we're, we're open to that. And and as as we go on, I I think that, well, you will see all the details and 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 be able to, you know, for form your opinion, you know, however, based on on what it is we're doing in detail.
Um. Chairman Mudge, may I ask another question? Of Nick. These waste piles up on Breeze Hill, does, will the state consider that to be mining?
Yes, we we originally asked the state if 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 they would consider it to just be a reclamation project. But because of their new rules, they're, they're, the state is about to issue new rules about mining. They haven't been accepted yet, but it's, it's just a formality. And and because of the new rules that are coming, they they do want to consider it mining just because it was mining before, basically. So those will be mining and and we will need permits for those as well. So again, every time we get a permit or amend a permit, that will require a public hearing and the the conditional use permit as well. So for each instance, there will be a public So for each instance, there will be a public hearing.
Thanks, Nick. I might suggest that I can, I can act as the go between regarding the neighboring property owners and the Crystal Mill to see about getting a couple of tours scheduled for you, if that would be acceptable to all of you.
And and I might for the record, I don't know where Crystal Mill came from, but it should be the Leadville Mill. But that's okay. I mean, Crystal sounds nice too, but but the the permit and everything will refer to it as the Leadville Mill.
Paul, I have one more additional question. I know that we received a letter from several adjacent property owning owners voicing some concern over the current existing conditional use permit. And I guess this, this may be also a question for Betty Benson. Would it be appropriate for me to read those concerns into the record at this point or file them with building and land use?
I I might suggest that they are issues that really don't exist yet, but they are legitimate concerns for the future. And I might further suggest that as Sarah, as Chairman Mudge has already noted, is that we will have a public hearing procedure for all of this. And that may be the best time to present that. I do have a copy of that letter and I will put it in the Union Mill file.
Okay. Betty, do you have, have any request or comment on that?
I think it would be appropriate for them to understand the concerns that the neighbors have put together. And to be upfront and perfectly clear, we're probably the most impacted since we are right next door. So we have a great number of concerns about what's going to happen in our very quiet, peaceful four and a half acres.
I might further point out that the proponents of this project have a copy of your letter. I forwarded it on to them. And I, and in fact, Nick and I have been talking about it for, oh, as much as six weeks ago.
Okay, so they're well, they are well aware of concerns that the neighboring property owners have with a new CUP application on that operation. And that those should be, I would assume, proactively addressed through a new CUP process.
I'd like perhaps pass that question on to Nick.
Mrs. Benson, as a matter of law and as a matter of the rules, that will happen. It's not, it's not really something we, we necessarily need to agree or disagree with. We, we, we have to, we have to address your concerns and comments as part of the, as part of the permitting process. And it was because of the permitting process that we sent all the neighbors the letters that we sent. We, again, we're required by law to send those letters and and because we're getting ready to submit our permit, that's why those letters were distributed to yourself and to all the neighbors.
Which letter are you referring to?
That would be the, the structural agreement.
May I suggest that it's, it's not very clear what that means, but I can guarantee you, we don't want any structural damage. And what's compensation mean to you?
All right. Betty and Nick, let's, let's just agree that any concerns that come in will be forwarded and go through Land Use and Paul to the potential applicant or property owner. And let's, let's reserve any further conversation for the hearing process once the application is submitted.
So I, I have one quick, there is a question in the chat that I think, that I think is pretty important and pertinent about the new CUP application. So when that application is done and submitted, how and where will those documents be available for the public hearing? For, for these adjacent property owners to have all of that documentation to make comment on?
We will, are required by our own code to advertise in the, the legal section of the paper, the section that I think nobody looks at. And I would encourage to scan once in a while. We are required to notify property owners, I think, within five hundred feet. And we are required to put a sign up that notifies anybody driving by. And we'd probably put that up down on the, on Highway twenty four at the entrance to the, the, the C dot approved to the, to the mill. And I think we are now going to be posting our hearings on our website. And if, and I believe that we will be able to provide all of the documents that are submitted to us. We, when we do a, a submittal, we take about ten days to review the submittal and make sure that it's compliant with the code, that it's complete. And I would have to say that and seven out of ten applications are not complete.
Yeah, easily, I would, I would say that. And in response to Jim's question in the chat, absolutely. If anyone wants to notify our office that they would like to receive the middle as soon as we've deemed it complete and our order, a notification that it's available on the website, we will certainly do that, but we don't post, we don't set a public hearing until we determine the application is complete. So absolutely, anyone that would like to have that information or or the acknowledgement that it's on the website and available, we would be happy to make sure that that happens. Just let us know, myself or Paul, and and we'll make sure that that's readily available as soon as it's available.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I just want to say thank you and I really appreciate the conversation and everyone being here today. Because I knew that this was going to be quite a hot topic. So thank you, everyone, for, for your work and and questions. And I think that we have a pretty clear path of what happens next and how the public comment process happens next. So I think adjacent property owners, Betty has been great about being in contact with us. If she has questions or concerns and and we vet her to get answers that she might need. So she has contact information for all of us if if anybody has questions or comments that they want to get about the process from building and land use or for us. So thank you.
I'd like to urge the neighbors to ask for tours. Because it's not just a tour of the facility. You get to ask the questions that you're putting into the chat. What, what's the issue with water? You get to ask when Nick is providing you, we're showing you what the mill is going to be doing and how it's going to process. Ask the questions that concern you. Ask the horse.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Marcel. I I echo that. Thank you for joining us, Gary, Gary and Nick. And we will be sure to push out that. What's that?
Gary, Gary and Nick.
That's, I did say that. Gary, Gary. Go ahead, Nick.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, sorry. Commissioner Mudge and Commissioners of the community. I want to thank you as well for inviting us to this. It's unfortunate that that all of this happened during this, this unfortunate COVID pandemic. Honestly, and I think Paul, Paul can probably second this. There's nothing I would have liked more than when, right when we did the change of ownership to come up and 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 just been in person at, at one of the public hearings and and just to kind of introduce ourselves and and show what we were doing. And I'm sorry about that, but but what, what Mr. Clarkson said stands. We are open to, to answer any questions that that the Commissioners have in the meantime and 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 make ourselves available to the neighbors and the community in any way they see appropriate that that we can help at least clarify what we're doing and and answer any questions that that we have. But thank you very much for inviting us.
Thanks again. All right. I think that wraps up the discussion on that item. Commissioners, do we have any other comments?
None for me. Thank you.
This was very helpful, especially to clarify the steps going forward. So that's great.
Very good. All right. Now, Commissioner Mudge, are we excused to, to, to log off? Or should we stay on?
No, you're, you're welcome to log off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And I look forward to meeting all of you in person, hopefully sooner than later.
Thanks for joining us, Nick. All right. Okay, and with that then, we'll move on to item eight, which is the RFP approval for tower construction at the Emergency Operations Center. I see, well, let's see, I saw Josh. Yep, there he is, Josh on the line. Josh is with our Emergency Management Office and has been working on the project. Do you want to give us an update? You had sent the board, the RFP that you guys drafted to post. Take it away.
I had two levels of muting. Sorry, I muted my mic too. I appreciate your time today. Thanks, Commissioners. We got the RFP completed like a week or two ago. Me and myself and Katie Walter have been working on it. She's with Rocky Mountain General Counsel. We feel like we got it dialed in well enough that we should get accurate and precise bids for the work to be done. The state, I know is, they haven't really been riding us, but we were told earlier in the year that the longer we sit on the funding, the more likelihood that it'll be reallocated because it's not technically a grant. The state's just like earmarked money for us as the county to put equipment on our tower that we build. So I feel we're in a place now that if we can get this RFP out and let the state know that, hey, we put it out for request, that that'll give them a good, good feeling and then our funding will still be there. Our hope is that with this RFP getting approved soon, that we'll get bids and such that we will have time to select one and get construction started at the beginning of construction season later this spring.
So Josh, other than getting that sense from the state that should the project linger on any longer, reallocation is, or we're threatened with reallocation of the, the funds, is there any other, you don't have any other timeline? To follow that, and I suppose, you know, should we go through the RFP process and go through proposals? We still have yet to award a potential bid. And I guess, I guess I just have questions and I wonder if we can maybe include this. I know Commissioner Marcel is trying to arrange a work session with the Sheriff's Office. And that is kind of where this project stemmed from. And the work session, I'm not clear on all the agenda items intended to be included on that, but I do have a lot of questions around a number of projects and and grant funding that are coming out of the Sheriff's Office. And I think the board needs some clarity on and prioritizing through, through each of those projects. I, well, to be clear, I don't, I don't have a problem with putting out this RFP. I just, are there, can you give us a quick summary, Josh, too, of some of those questions that came up about co-location and the height of the tower? And just clarify for us whether or not any of those additions, if you will, are, are still being pursued?
We were told by a couple different tower companies, I mean, take that with a grain of salt, that, you know, they may have their own interests, that our tower, as requested, would suffice for our needs, the height wise. But it may not be tall enough to draw in like a cell provider of some sort to, you know, want to co-locate on our tower. The, the play there was that, like Verizon already has a tower, I believe, at the hospital, AT&amp;T and I think, what's the other one? It doesn't matter. They have one near Turquoise Lake up on Sugarloaf Hill, I believe. The, their, their comments were that we have to draw them away from those locations that they already exist at and that our tower height may not be ample enough for them to want to move to our tower, to spend the money to move to, to our tower. The height that they were suggesting would be at least thirty feet taller than what we requested in the CUP process. We had fears that going back through CUP might present more challenges with the public, especially having that tall of a tower, that close to kind of like a booming residential area. And so we decided that we'll build the tower with the specifications that were originally given to us. And if, you know, that's the betterment of the town. Would co-location be the better option, especially financially? Yes. But for us, it seemed like it was almost too much of a hurdle to get done in time for the state not to want to reallocate that money. And that's kind of the determination we had with moving forward with the RFP as we said. And the only other problem we ran into is that the state is paying for the, the electronics and I think the generator. But they will not provide the building, the, the electronic shed. So that would be, that's also included in the RFP that the, the bid must include provisions for constructing or purchasing. Those, those buildings are typically pre, prefabricated. Purchasing one of those buildings, that would be in the quote as well.
Okay. Commissioner Feedler?
Yeah, I had a question. I think, maybe, maybe covered it, but as I read the RFP, it wasn't clear whether the contractor would, like, who's responsible for getting like utility, I guess, especially power supply to the site or is that, or is it like completely there and not an issue?
I believe it's already there. It'd be the contractor, like, that would be part of what they would research for the bid. We, we shouldn't have any problems. I think that site is already like very, very close to existing utilities. We had a couple of those tower companies, like I said, come up and they both were like, oh, this would be really easy to build as far as utilities go. It was one of the main reasons we chose that location too, because A, it's already owned by the city. We already have DOC there and it's so close to, like, utilities. Because they, they, we're, there's better locations on taller hills around here, but the, the cost of putting in commercial power, we were told, can cost upwards of a million dollar a mile, which is, you know, a non-starter for us. That was the big location choice was that utilities are already on site.
Okay, I mean, if, if, if you're confident that it's close enough, that it doesn't need to be like crystal clear spelled out in the RFP, you know, that makes sense. It just, it just struck me. You know, that, that's often a big issue in any new construction project.
I mean, and I can talk to Katie. I don't think it would be very hard to clarify those terms. I feel like that wouldn't take us a lot of time if it, if it made everyone feel better to have clearer terms on that specific subject. I'll write down a note for that and discuss with Katie. I don't think that would take long, so.
And then I had like one super minor that on item seven, there's a tiny typo.
Let's see.
Oh, I, I, I can forward that separately.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Sorry, Josh, I'm pulling this up my mind here.
No problem.
I just, um, let's see here. Will, will the party that's in charge of, of the or the firm that's selected with the RFP, will they be tasked with securing and procuring the actual tower construction itself? Or will that come from the state and their, the scope of work in the RFP is just strictly to the design and engineering of the tower that is procured through the state?
The the state will only procure electronics for the tower, the design company, the firm, construction company, whatever you want to call it. They have to submit engineering drawings of their tower design to the state so the state can analyze to make sure it can hold their equipment for our wind and snow load at this elevation. So the tower company itself will build the the tower and they will source it. The state will have only engineering input and then I guess sign off authority that that tower is adequate for their equipment to be installed, because at the end of the day, that's the state's equipment, and they want to make sure that things aren't going to fall over.
Okay, so in the, in the RFP, then it doesn't I think it kind of is a little confusing because it doesn't specify that they would need to design, procure and construct the tower. Does that make, does that make sense? Okay, I think if we could add a little bit of that clarification before we release that, that would be really helpful because I think we've been lacking that a lot in this project where we've been trying to understand what the actual scope of work is in the, in the project itself. And so I would hate for us to engage with someone to do the design and the engineering and and potentially project management of it and then figure out that the best course forward is to add an additional layer of securing materials or whatever that is. But when I was reading through that RFP, I think those were the only questions that I may have had.
Okay, and I understand with the, because I know we've been burned with contractors and such on other projects within the county. So I I fully understand why we need that clarity, just to make sure that we have the I guess, the legal backing to make sure that construction companies held to what they agreed to do, so.
If I can just offer too, you know, once the bids and proposals are received, you know, the the specific contract for this work will have more definition as to the full scope of work. So we can also address it there, but I think it makes sense to make sure that anybody who's going to submit a bid understands that that's supposed to be within the scope of work.
Am I understanding correctly too, that the only additional budgetary change to this project since the start is that electrical room that was not included, or is project management included? Or that's, that's proposed to be, sorry, requested to be proposed on through the publication of the RFP? Is that an additional cost to the county? That was not, or not covered by the state granting?
For, the building is the one additional cost that I know for sure. I believe we put in the RFP that and what, from what I heard from Troy Baum, Baum from United Tower, who is one of the ones that visited us, is that they will start it from, like, that'll be their project from start to finish it. And so the management will come from their end. I, I'm not sure if that would be an additional cost. I think that, I mean, I imagine they just include it in their bid. I, and I'm pretty sure that's what most would do, but I I'm unfamiliar with with a lot of tower construction stuff, so most everything I've learned has been this year, so.
No, I I would assume that they include it in there, but I think, I think my basic question and maybe Commissioners, we just include this as an overview of whatever work session we scheduled with the Sheriff's Office of, you know, a list of projects, status, original budget, any deviation, and just getting updates and clarification on a number of things, including, including this project. Thoughts? From my Commissioners?
I think that, I think that that's a justifiable concern is the actual payment of a third-party engineering firm to do the the engineering work and the planning work for the actual tower construction. I'm not entirely sure. And I don't know, Josh, if you are entirely sure if the state's funding covers this piece of the project or if it's strictly for the physical infrastructure.
The state's funding doesn't cover, that's, we're on the hook for that. It's our, our task to build them a site for their equipment. So that's where we stand as far as engineering and stuff goes. We initially reached out for some third-party engineering to see exactly what we would need for a tower. A lot of tower companies just aren't interested in doing that single piece. I reached out to several. And most of them told me to go pound sand or didn't respond at all. So we found that they, if they want to do it, they want to do all of it and and they want the bid and they want the money as, you know, to to build our project. So we tried to run that route down. I couldn't get any traction. And so now we're just, we're going to include it in the RFP that the engineering and such will be included with the bid.
Okay, and that's outside of our eighty thousand dollar match, if you will, for the state funding that we had projected in the 2020 budget.
That should be, because they're the ones designing the tower. I don't know if it'd be any additional. We got a quote from Troy back in April, I think, where he gave us an eighth, like roughly an eighty thousand dollar quote for what we needed for the tower, including the the actual tower itself and the whole construction. So I I'm not sure if it'd be in any extra. Like I said, I'm not I'm not a construction, I've never done this before. That's one question I I'm uncertain about.
Would it be fair to maybe not determine to post the RFP at this time? But wait for that scheduled work session with the Sheriff's Office? I I really feel like we need to, the board needs to get a grasp on all the projects happening and what their status and budget looks like, so that we can weigh in and prioritize and be sure that we're, you know, in full support of of moving forward with anything. So we don't, we don't we don't want to get eighty percent down a path and, and realize that there's three hundred dollars or three hundred thousand dollars we haven't budgeted for in a project. Yeah, and Josh, I do, I do just want to give you some kudos, because I think by default you've been plugged in to project management on the, on the tower thus far. And thank you for doing that and kind of picking up the pieces to to help move it along for the, for the sake of emergency managers and responders and community, in communication improvement. But I I think we need some clarity from the Sheriff's Office.
I agree. When would that work session be?
We're planning that work session to be on January twenty-sixth at eleven AM. And I've got a list of items that I've sent over to Sheriff Reyes and her administration. Just to, that that we have a few question, lingering questions on as a new board. And so if you want me to add this to that list, I can definitely send her an email. Adding that, this to that list, since it, I believe she, it's her grant. So she might be able to have that documentation for us to look at and make sure that it's properly budgeted and accounted for.
I understand, and I I'm okay with that timeline. I I'm just afraid if we wait too long, we push out the construction time based off of having, you know, the length of time to get bids and accept them and review. So that, but a week is, I think that's not going to hurt us too much. So I, if that is what the board feels would be the best option and course for us to make sure we're in the right monetarily, I think that's the best case scenario.
Okay, I think that'd be really great, Josh, if we could, if we could do that, so that we're all on the same page about it.
And and depending on what kind of information and clarity we get on that, we can always schedule a special meeting to to formally accept and and direct you to post that RFP.
Excellent.
All right. Thanks for all your work on this.
I appreciate it. I I do. It's been, it's been a fun learning process. Hence, I ever thought I'd get into tower building, but.
Any other comments from my fellow Commissioners on the RFP? Hearing none.
None for me.
Okay. Okay, we will move on then to item nine. To review the proposal from Rocky Mountain General Counsel for Legal Services, Rocky Mountain General Counsel and Chris Floyd have been appointed, or Chris Floyd has been appointed as the County Attorney per the resolution earlier in the meeting. And we received a proposal from the office. I don't have any questions on the proposal. Commissioner Marcela?
I do not. I I think it might be helpful too, if Chris can just chime in with the, maybe the basis of that proposal. I don't have any questions. Jeff, Commissioner Feedler, do you have, have any questions of Chris on her proposal?
No, I don't. It seemed straightforward.
Yeah, I I'm happy just to say that the proposal is based on our experience over the last year or so in providing services to the county and trying to find a cost-effective and efficient way to approach provision of pretty much general counsel services to the county. And in a way that makes it cost-effective so that the county and its agencies and and staff and such can feel comfortable in using legal services when needed so we can avoid some of the pitfalls that the county has fallen into in the past with having certain things not reviewed by legal counsel. So I'm happy to answer any questions that come up with that. The other thing I had noticed, the proposal does mention the the desire to have Katie Walter, my colleague, appointed as my assistant. Because we think one of the things we bring to the table with this proposal is not just a depth of experience, but also more of a depth of resources. So it's not just one person. So if by chance I'm tied up on something else, Katie might be able to step in and assist with matters as they arise. So there's not a lapse or gap in services as they may be needed. So we're honored to be tapped for this role and happy to continue working with the county and especially the Commissioners to help move things forward and make sure that there's a good process and procedure all the way around for doing stuff.
Chris, I just want to, want to clarify to you, I did list Katie on that role as a deputy to you on that resolution that we had adopted previously. At the beginning of the meeting. And I don't have any further questions about the proposal, but it looks like Paul might.
Yeah, this is really more, well, this is for everybody, I think. Does this mean that you're going to, the Board of County Commissioners is going to have legal representation at hearings?
Well, it depends on what they're for. There are certain scope, you know, there are things that that we will handle administrative hearings and that type of thing make a lot of sense. But the one thing that that the county needs that one person or even two isn't always able to provide when it comes to legal services is specialized. You know, there there are certain matters that come up where you need specialized legal counsel with expertise in those areas. And so when those needs arise, our plan would be to help the county in engaging those resources and then managing them to make sure that there's no duplication of effort or, you know, excess services being provided. So what type of hearings are you anticipating?
Well, I'm, I'm just sort of, I I've been in plenty of hearings in which we probably should have had legal representation at the time, and we didn't. And I am, my experience in other jurisdictions is that the, the County Attorney does attend the hearings.
Yeah, it 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 would just depend on the topic and whether we were the appropriate resource to provide that representation. So that's, that's part of what a general counsel, if you will, offers is the management of legal services. So you can have assistance in determining what type of services are needed and what's the best resource to provide those services.
Well, I just, I just want to kind of tag on to that point a little bit. You know, I think we recognize as Commissioners, our job is to leave the community and the organization in a better place than when we received it and took office. And this is just one step closer to doing that. Where we have an engagement that provides consistent legal representation. And and we'll talk a little bit about this tomorrow of what directors should expect, because we want to be sure that we're using our legal services wisely and and make sure that we're cataloging those, those legal services and and what we're reaching out to legal for. So we'll have directors, you know, reach out to your managing commissioner right now. And then we'll vet that through legal if we deem it to be appropriate. And legal will then help us with additional resources if needed. But I think what we're striving for here is consistency, 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 which is something that we have lacked for a very long time. And so twenty twenty-one is going to be a big year for us, because we're, we're going through some organizational changes that are very big. And and will probably be somewhat of a shock to the system at first, but but this is just a baby step to get there.
Yeah, and so, and the one thing I'd offer in that regard is, that's truly, the County Attorney serves as the representative of the county, but specifically the, the County Board of County Commissioners. And so it's only representation of other agencies and officers and such by their delegation. So as Kayla was saying, I think that's part of the the conversation to determine what agencies and and departments will need direct representation and what will work as, you know, matters come up that that they go to their supervising commissioner to request assistance and we process it that way.
This is all great. I think consistency is one issue that I think is going to be better addressed. I think transparency is also going to be another one.
Very good. Well, the proposal submitted to us includes a five thousand dollar monthly retainer and fees beyond the twenty-five hours a month that that is intended to include. And so as, excuse me, Commissioner Marcela alluded to, we will work through how to how the board intends to I guess, manage, manage that, those parameters. But other than that, I I completely agree, it's going to be great to have the availability of the firm to join us, as as you have been a great support thus far, Chris. So, thank you.
And and just, just so people understand, that retainer is something that's billed against at a discounted rate of two hundred dollars an hour, which is you know, my standard hourly rate's three hundred and fifty dollars an hour, and Katie's is two hundred and fifty. So it represents a substantial discount for the services being provided to the county. Just so folks don't think that we're going to be trying to price gouge the county in terms of the services being provided. That's, that's part of our goal to make it a cost-effective solution for you.
I don't feel like I have any other questions at this time, and I feel comfortable making a motion that we approve and accept the proposal for, from Rocky Mountain General Counsel for Legal Services for twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that. RMGC proposal.
Okay, any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
Okay, all right. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. You know, it's approval.
We look forward to continuing to working with you.
Thank you, Chris. Same here. Um, okay, let me pull up my All right, and let's go on to item number ten, which is the conversation and update from Ski Join for the consideration of a twenty twenty-one event. I believe Duffy Council, who organizes the event, was on earlier. And let me get back to meeting here. Okay.
Duffy, thanks for your patience. It's been a little longer than we anticipated.
Thank you. Yeah. All right, Duffy. Well, I understand, so.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Yep, Duffy and Michael reached out, Michael Irwin with a new proposal, and I thought that with a new proposal and I thought that in, 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 in the spirit of needing to, you know, squeeze these reviews and conversations in as quickly as possible for land review and other, other referral agency reviews, we'd get this on the agenda for a discussion. So Duffy, do you want to open up and do you have the ability to share your screen or if you would like me to share a map or an image? Please feel free to ask me to do so.
Yeah, first I'm, thank you guys for having me for meeting and helping me push this along. Can everyone give me a thumbs up? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I think there's a slight delay, but yes, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, cool. If that changes, let me know. I'm kind of in some spotty internet. Sarah, I don't know if Mike shared with you the drawing he shared with me. I don't have anything to share on my screen. I'll maybe try to go through some highlights of what we're thinking. Maybe ask you guys, write down any questions that come up. And then once I'm done, then we can have a Q and A session and go kind of free form from there. Is that okay? Cool. So, so first and foremost, first and foremost, we're coming to you guys after meeting with the city and determining that we're not going to be able to do it on the avenue. And we are not going to be able to have spectators. And so our, our plan has changed and we are going to try to do the event on McWeffy Drive. So maybe close your eyes and no spectators. Very clear. We'll put that on the poster. We'll put that on Facebook. We'll put that on our website. No spectators. So maybe close your eyes and visualize McWeffy Drive, starting right where the Mineral Belt Trail crosses it. And you would turn to the west to go to the recycling containers. That is where we're going to envision, I'll call the start. Yeah, can you zoom that in a little bit further there, Sarah? That's awesome. We'll try to keep that dirt road to the west there able to be accessed if a homeowner needs to go home or needs to leave their home. I don't anticipate much traffic there at all. But we will set the first barricades or closures of county roads and, and maybe stepping back, Mike Irwin deserves huge credit for this. This was his plan or idea, found this area. I really think it checks all the boxes we need. Thank you. Huge thank you to Mike Irwin. So we'll block off McWeffy at Third Street, West Third Street there, kind of to the south or towards the CMC. We'll also block off West Sixth Street. And we will stage the emergency vehicles there, like the ambulance. And in years past, same, same plan there. If, if we can have it on site, great. If it gets called away, then we go into on-call mode, similar to if you called 911 from your home. We'll likely stage there Dennis Lindemeyer and his truck as the veterinary technician for the event. We also bring in Colleen Nielsen, Colleen Nielsen from, from, excuse me, Colleen Harrison from Nathrop as an equine vet. We'll let her park there so that we've got kind of our emergency crews, if you will, staged there. We'll also block off the West 10th or McWeffy as it makes the gentle turn right near the Evergreen Cemetery. That'll serve as kind of the runout. So imagine the guys starting from about the Mineral Belt Trail and the recycling turnoff and the community farm road is going to be the start. They'll travel north and finish line will be just past West Sixth Street, yielding us about another 800 or so feet to do that gentle right turn onto McWeffy. And the West 10th extension heading towards Evergreen Cemetery. Riders and horses get off of the snow there onto a strip of blacktop. We'll leave so that they can sneak back into the high school park or the intermediary school, excuse me. Parking lot, cut through the parking lot, cross West Sixth, hop onto the Mineral Belt Trail and then trot back to the starting corral area. Similarly, when the skiers finish, they'll at kind of the entrance that's on the north side of the community field by Saunders there. We'll have AJ Morris waiting with ATV to grab the skier after they're done with their run. And then zip them back around the community field to kind of where the recycling containers are as the skier staging area. We'll also block off County Road Four as you're heading out towards turquoise. Maybe just, just before the, the Evergreen Cemetery entrance there. We don't want to block anything off unnecessarily, but merely create what I'll call the Leadville Championship Ski Joring Snow Globe. Right? The basketball guys are in a bubble. We're going to go in a snow globe to try to keep only those competing there in that area. Everybody else. EMS vehicle safety crew, roadblocks, one, two, three. So there'll be in essence, three, three blocked off, four blocked off roads. You've got McWeffy towards the start of the track by Third Street. You've got West Sixth Street closed off, maybe almost up to the Mineral Belt Trail there because the riders got to get on it. We'll close off then McWeffy or, or West 10th Extension before we get to Evergreen Cemetery. Off County Road Four, going out towards turquoise at the cemetery entrance. We don't really need that area at all. Just want to keep traffic out. The facility out there really checks all the boxes for us. You've got bathrooms there at the community field. We've got power. There's a flagpole that we can raise and lower the American flag on Saturday and then on Sunday for the National Anthem. One of the things I might need county commissioners or county employees some help with, who's our, who's our IT guy? I might need some help with wifi and Mike had mentioned, maybe we could broadcast either from intermediary school to provide some additional bandwidth. We would certainly plan to name, as we have before when we did it on the avenue, we would name the county, the city Leadville, any affiliated parties as additionally insured and provide COIs. That's no big deal. As far as the event itself, I might look for, for kind of your guidance on this one. We had been proceeding under the guidelines of an outdoor event, which was going to limit us, I believe, to 75 competitors, not including event staff and support staff and timers and volunteers and all that. But as we remove the spectator component, I almost start to think we might be operating more under the guidelines for a race. Because we don't really have an event or spectators any longer, but more of a race, which I think increases the amount, stipulates there's not to be more than 25 at the start or the finish. Finish is, is non-issue. There's only a couple of folks there at the finish for a moment anyways. And in the start, I'm confident we could certainly stay under that 25 total person. Again, not including event staff or volunteers. So I, maybe my first question to y'all is, what do you think we're operating as an event or a race or both?
So Duffy, I can't answer that question. This is Amber from the Recreation Department. But what I do want to say is that per our current public health guidelines, I am only allowed to permit facility use for up to 50 people at this time by the Public Health Department. So I don't know, I know you will obviously be on McWeffy as well, but kind of with this mix of use at Community Field, I think that we probably need to get clarification on from the Health Department. And Anne I see is here, but I'm not sure if, like, I would be allowed to permit that facility use to you if you had more than 50. And I don't know if Anne, you have thoughts on that, but I think Duffy and I will need to know that.
Um, yeah, I've got a couple, just kind of immediate thoughts. I think that we, through the application process, but an early question that we can pose to Colleen is the interpretation of your operating plan and where it falls within those guidelines. So I think that, you know, getting the application and the operation plan as quickly as possible, we can get that interpretation from Public Health and then Amber and I will have a better idea moving forward. I also, just like in your early processing of this, I think there's two things that you need to take into account. One is bus routes operating on Friday. You know, you and I talked about that a little earlier today. But I would really encourage you to talk to the district and find out if there's going to be an impact to those bus routes. And then there is more traffic on County Road 36 than I think you might anticipate. North there of the community field, there is, that's a pretty busy dirt road. A lot of people use it, but there's a lot of homeowners that access it. And so that is their direct access for emergency egress. There's a path through County Road 36 that cuts through turquoise Lake Estates. I don't know the accessibility of that, but that might be a good discussion to have with Michael Irwin. Because I'm sure that those, even when we're doing Trail 100, the property owners on County Road 36, that's I think part of the 10K race that happens. And so I get comments from those folks, some of those property owners were probably here when we were doing the middle discussion. So, so I just kind of want to maybe highlight for you that there's a little more use on that road for property owners. And I think you would, you know, you and I kind of discussed this a little earlier, but having a means of access for those property owners during the event, if they have to get in and out of their property, that would be good. So I would just really hope that maybe we can get the application quickly and the operation plan quickly so I can get it to Public Health and we can get that early interpretation done with them for you.
I'll see if I can get application at least started so that we can begin this process to you by tomorrow somehow. Yeah, thank you. As far as like.
Even if you could pose that, you know, we could get that, that question to Colleen. You know, you interpret it in your own words, how you perceive that you might fit in. And then, then we can take that to Public Health and get their determination or their recommendation for the board on it.
Got it.
Okay.
Hey Anne, this is Michael.
And, and if you guys have questions, I don't want to take up too much time as far as, you know, waivers and temperature checks being done daily. We've got a plan at the Elks Lodge to kind of, oh, I'll say subdivide the lodge into two spaces, one for registration on Friday where they'd come in the front doors, go immediately downstairs, get temperature checked at the door, obviously, and sign waiver that they have been experiencing no symptoms or around people or yada, yada. Do the registration and then out the secret way out the kitchen into the back parking lot and they can come back in the Elks if they, if they want to go that route. We'll simplify the registration and awards, you know, it'll be a more simplified event. I don't, we're not going to do a kids event. We're not going to do snowmobile class, so there won't be any snowmobiles out there back and forth. I've got a couple of small logistical challenges. I got to figure out just like, how do we get the rings back to the ring stands? Because you're not going to really be able to drive or, or travel parallel to the course, but you'll be able to get close. I'm, I'm exploring and I'm really hopeful that I can broadcast the event. We did do that when we were at the San Juan Ski Joring Event two weeks ago in Ridgeway, Colorado. Really high level. They would do 12 commercials. I would want to do one obviously for Leadville and Lake County, obviously one for the CMC, obviously one for Ski Cooper, you know, or this is our chance. The, the Ridgeway event was broadcast last year and the Altitude Network has aired it 30 times since. They would be doing something similar for us. So I need to find, I think about nine sponsors to cover the several thousand dollars it's going to cost us to be able to do that. We'll probably put some type of link on our poster and our website and our Facebook page that says, you know, hey, click here or click this QR code to get access to the link to view the event. If we say yeah, we, we probably will consciously hold off until putting out posters about the event until maybe, you know, second week, first week of February. Facebook posts will, will try to minimize. What I don't want to do is create frustration that we're doing this event, but you can't come view it. And what I'm more hopeful for instead is that having the ability to view it enables downtown businesses and people throughout the community to still watch the granddaddy of them all for its 73rd year. You know, I have, I've said to a few of you, I don't like the term placeholder event. But unfortunately, I think that that's an accurate term for what we're going to try to do this year to see if we can do it safely and continue our tradition. I think the, I think the community needs ski joring back.
Commissioner Fiedler, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to second Anne's comment about checking in with the school district and the LCIS building. Like, I think not just the Friday buses, but also, I mean, just every now and then there's like maintenance scheduled. Sometimes there are events over the weekend. So just sort of checking in on that access with them. And also I guess looking at that map, that was super helpful. Maybe just check in with the farm too. Again, probably not an issue in the middle of winter, but you never know if they just happen to have something crazy scheduled.
Does anybody have?
Yeah.
Sarah, maybe for you, does anybody have a contact with the school that I could, could reach out to and say, Kate, here's kind of what we're thinking? We might be able to wait to start building the track on Friday because we're not going to put up any event fencing and banners and all the, the stuff that goes with the avenue. Perhaps we could wait until after the drop, pickup and drop off for school starts. So we're dealing with just one at the end of the day. Who would be, who would be who I talked to with the school district?
Duffy, this is Amber. You're going to need to talk to Bunny Taylor. She's in charge of facilities and kind of that rental reservation component. And then I just wanted to highlight as well, the aquatic center is currently closed, but we may very well be reopened at that point. So there's going to be conflict throughout the entire weekend with that parking lot, though we are going to need to have a good plan for how to mitigate that. So if you could address that in your operations plan when you submit it to Anne, that would be really helpful for me. And then Anne, Anne will, Anne will connect us, but also there's going to be a facility use component here on my end as well that you and I will need to work through. And there are fees associated with that, which you can ask for a waiver from, from the BOCC. And I don't know that they want to entertain that today, but that is something that we'll have to address as we get a little bit further down the road.
Sorry, Amber, you kind of cut out there. Say again, did you say that there's fees that I face for using the parking lot?
Yeah, we have, not for the aquatic center, but we have fees for the community park field. So if you think that that's something that you're going to use as a part of the event, we'll need to address that and the BOCC sometimes waive fees, which they may be willing to do. But that's a question that we'll have to pose to them when we kind of have a better picture of what this looks like.
Sure. And, and for simplicity, we won't be using any of the field. We would obviously like to have access to the bathrooms and that building that's there. And maybe just for uber simplicity, I'll reference the motion made last year, perhaps the year before by Dolores Semsack, unanimously approved by the Board of County Commissioners that said that Lake County agrees to not charge our legacy historical events, Leadville Ski Joring and Boom Days for any costs incurred for support. How's that?
I think we, so it sounds like we can connect you with Ameen at IT to see what that conversation might be around Bodman. But perhaps first putting those, I see Commissioner Marcela maybe wants to make a comment. But first putting that proposal as Anne said in your own words, so that we can be clear what Public Health's interpretation of the event would be. When you and I, when you had talked to me, I was imagining one of the high school bike events that had happened at Dutch Henry. But that being said, everything really relies on the status of COVID and what's happening. So, so I think that would be your first, if you can get that out tomorrow Duffy or by the end of the week, that would be incredibly helpful for us all to continue to spend time trying to, yeah, figure this out. Also, just for my clarification, I, I don't, I know that this conversation has been happening at this city. Have there been any specific conversations with the county yet? It's not my understanding that we have had the conversation. It's not my understanding that we have had the conversations yet around this. So have there been conversations and have there been any big red flags or concerns that have been brought up and not addressed? I guess I'll direct that question to.
I haven't had any yet.
I know, we, you know, we haven't, Duffy, I kind of talked about that a little bit today. I think he's talked with Public Works. And so they've really been instrumental in helping. Thank you, Michael, for your assistance to Duffy, especially while I was gone. And, but yeah, we definitely talked today about, you know, the need to get the application out with the operational plan to all the agencies so that they can weigh in. And, and you know, there's just always so many moving parts that they're great at identifying and bringing forward for the board to consider. So I don't think, you know, there's a lot of agencies that really haven't been, haven't weighed in with yet. So looking forward to doing that and kind of then being able to lift up any of those concerns to the board.
Okay.
The only question that I have, Anne, is would you, is the school district considered a referral agency for you?
Typically, they're not a review agency, but yes, as a, in this case, I would identify them as a stakeholder and I would refer it on to them.
Okay, that's fine. I think it would just be helpful.
I completely agree, Kayla. I think that, yeah, I think that there's impacts there that they would intimately know, as Jeff mentioned too. So, yeah, absolutely.
And Anne, this is Amber. Is the farm a referral agency as well from like a composting trash standpoint? Because I do, they do compost over the winter and so there may be some use there. And I know Duffy said he would speak with Emily, but just want to make sure they're on that list as well.
Yep, Emily is on the list, largely due for recycling requirements mandated by the application. So she will receive it as a normal referral agency.
Okay, so it sounds like start of an application to, one, get the interpretation of the event from Public Health, two, get some traffic control situated, three, Lake County School District, and their needs on Friday, or should they have other concerns for the weekend? The facilities fee question, IT, and any broadband needs or clarification for broadcasting, and then the farm to be weighing in.
Yes.
All right. All right. And just keep, yeah, keep the board posted, I think, on the status and the progress. And, oh, looks like Paul has his hand raised. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you. Spectators, this will be the 73rd year. I can't imagine that spectators aren't going to come.
Yeah, Paul, I think I share your sentiment. I can't say that I can put a plan in place that keeps folks from trudging, you know, through knee-deep snow off a beaten path somewhere and hiding in the bushes to try to watch. But I think that from our event standpoint, we won't be having any event fencing along the course. It's going to be our goal as all of us there to keep anyone significant distance away. You know, the community of Leadville cannot stop someone who's out for a walk and wants to stop up on West Sixth Street or the upper parking lot area, the intermediary school. I don't know that I can put a plan in place to keep folks beyond 200 yards away, 100 yards away.
What, I will add, Paul, and I brought that up to Duffy asking about folks lining up along McWeffy, but it's actually, would be quite difficult for people to spectate, and that is not ideal for the racers. They can't have that for the horses and whatnot. So anybody, you know, it might actually be a bit difficult if they're going to set up over here. You know, they're going to keep spectators out of here, keep spectators off the route. We're going to keep spectators clear for the flow of traffic. So, but all things to have everybody continue to weigh in on. But it may be more, it may be more difficult for spectators than we might think. So maybe.
It doesn't look very conducive to having spectators. But I'm sure there will be people that will show up. I mean, are you closing off the mineral belt that goes through there?
Sorry, Paul, say that again.
Are you closing the mineral belt trail?
Good question. Hadn't thought that far. Suppose if a dog walker or a cross-country skier, that's.
I think that would be.
I think I got to think about that some more. I hadn't thought about clop.
That'll be a good spectator point, I think, because it's high enough that they'll be able to see much of the course.
It sounds like.
Yeah, I think West Sixth Street will be. I think West Sixth Street will be a good vantage point. You know, again, the upper parking lot of the intermediary school. I don't know that we need to close the mineral belt trail. You know, we had kind of affectionately joked that we might have a couple of cross-country skiers on Saturday or Sunday who are sad. And I joked, well, they might not be so sad if the rider gives them the rope and gives them a little pull along the mineral belt trail. So I, I'd rather not close the mineral belt trail if we don't have to. You know, again, I don't want to negatively impact anybody.
Well, I don't think you want to, I don't like. Spectators away with a gun or anything like that. I think you just need to plan that spectators are going to be there.
Well, I disagree that we need to plan that. Yeah, I disagree that we're going to need to plan that they're going to be there. But if I need to station a person at West Crossing or at McWeffy Extension, West 10th Crossing, or at the start area to turn folks away at the barricade that says road closed and keep them well away, then we can do that with a couple of bodies effectively. I don't want people near the track.
You could well be right. I'm not here to criticize anything. I'm just sort of raising a point.
Okay. All right. Okay, so I think, I think we have clarity on communications and, Duffy, do you need, do you want to get in touch with Anne, maybe with that application? And be sure that you have contacts for the farm? And I can connect to you with our IT staff to ask your questions.
Yeah. That would be awesome, Sarah. Anne, if that's cool, call you from the road tomorrow. I think I'm going to be looking for IT contact. Whoever my person at the school is, farm contact. I need to talk to somebody about mineral belt trail. And then Anne, you and I can talk about 36 and maybe Mike Irwin. You and I can talk about that potential for County Road 36 to Turquoise Lake Estates to see if that's an alternate out for those two and a half, three days.
Duffy, yeah, I'm happy to, sorry, go ahead, Michael.
There is no way in the wintertime to get from Turquoise Lake Estates to County Road 36. So the only people that should be going down County Road 36 that have to go down there are the people that live down there. I know there's a lot of dog walkers and everything that use it and more power to them. They can still use it. We're not going to close the access to 36. We'll work around that.
Duffy, this is, sorry Duffy, this is Amber again. So your contact at the school is Bunny Taylor. She's at 6800.
Thank you.
Yes, and then if, for mineral belt trail, that's probably a conversation with myself and then I think also the mineral belt trail board. So I think if you want to make a decision about if that's something you're serious about, if it is, we can move it to the right people.
Sorry, Amber, you're breaking up there. Say that one more time, please.
Just for the mineral belt trail board folks, they're going to need to be involved in that decision if you do want to close the mineral belt trail. And then myself, from the aspect of being kind of the lead on the grooming. So if you want to just make a decision about if that's something that you want to do or not, if you think you may want to close it, we can talk about it. If you don't want to, then we don't need to. So just let us know.
Got it. So I will use you as point of contact for mineral belt trail, open or closed. Cool?
Yeah, I think that sounds good. If you, if you discuss traffic control and options with Public Works and Michael, and then, and then bring that whether or not you request the closure of the mineral belt to Amber and the mineral belt trail, that would be great. Okay. I have a real quick email started with some of those contacts. I will just shoot with everybody copied on there over. But otherwise, we'll wait for an update. Does that sound good, Duffy? All right, great.
Yes, yeah, thank you, guys. This has not been easy and we're getting awful close. I appreciate everybody's dedication towards trying to make it happen.
Great. All right, if there's no other comments, thumbs up from Commissioner Marcela. Great. We will move on to the next item. Let me see, which is 11, contract extension for Value West Services for commercial property appraisal. This is through the assessor's office, who contracts out the appraisal of all of our commercial properties. I believe we've been doing that for a few years now, which provides a great efficiency to the, to the appraiser's office.
Sorry. Yeah, I just have some background information. So the Lake County Assessor's Office has contracted with Value West Services for Commercial Property Appraisal because Commercial Property Appraisal takes into account things like the economic factor, highest and best use factor, and those, those types of things. And so in order for us to get the most unbiased look at the market value appraisal, they contract with Value West. So just in taking some of those classes for the URA through the Division of Property Taxation, I was able to see just how complex that truly is. And I will say that this is one of the best services that we contract with for the appraisal of property.
Thanks, thank you for that, Commissioner Marcela. I don't have any questions on the engagement. Commissioner Feedler, do you have anything?
Yeah, no, I don't. And Commissioner Marcela, that was helpful background and sort of, maybe endorsement's a strong word, but saying we have a good experience with them. So no, that seemed straightforward to me.
Great. I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract, the extension of the contract for Value West Services for Commercial Property Appraisal.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
None from me, thank you.
No, I'm all good.
Okay, great, I don't have anything either. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimously passed, great. All right. Okay, moving on to items 12 and 13 related, the M140 motor grader purchase that has been budgeted with Public Works and they're within their budget. And then 13, sorry, Michael, would you just finish that Western? The title there.
Western's dark plow truck purchase order.
Thank you. Plow truck and grader. All right. And to, Michael, do you have any other background for us on those? And could you just touch on funding source through Public Works?
The funding, funding source for Public Works is our, the Road and Bridge Fund, which is funded by HUTF dollars, specific ownership taxes and stuff like that. It is not funded through any property taxes in the county. Basically, HUTF funds, highway users tax is a gas fund. So, yeah, everybody pays for it all across America. And we get a portion of that. So right now, we have almost $2 million in that fund that we've saved over several years. And these two purchases will bring that down to about $1 million left in there. Actually, it'll be a little bit less than that because I got some pretty good deals this year. A lot less on the plow trucks. We thought it was going to be about $365,000. We've got it at $289,000 right now with all of the plows and lights and bells and whistles on it. Then on the motor grader, it's actually a 150, just because I had it requoted. The only difference between a 140 and a 150 is it's got, instead of a steering wheel, it's got joysticks. So it's more operator-friendly, ergonomically easier to operate than a steering wheel, believe it or not. But your hands are down beside you instead of up in the air and doing stuff. And as long as we keep that, that machine for nine years, I got a seven and a half percent discount on the machine, which we don't seem to have a problem keeping equipment. Our oldest motor grader right now is 17 years old. And the next one's three years behind that. And right now, I'm down to one motor grader in the county. One went to Denver today to get fixed, which is never good. Because right now, we got good weather and hopefully it stays that way, but we need snow too. So that's about it on those.
Thanks, Michael. An ancillary to the purchase request here, could you touch on a little bit of, you know, the county? We had done an asphalt assessment on, on our roads. Can you give us a high-level overview of that? Just to emphasize the importance of maintaining one of our most valuable assets as a county in the road infrastructure that we have?
Yes, according to that, and I'm starting to get feedback from them now. We started this program last year. They actually did the survey in August of last year. Our assets, our asphalt road assets are worth $44 million. Everybody says our roads are in very bad condition. And comparatively across the nation, we seem to be in really good condition. Most of our roads are in the 50 to 60% range, which is normal for roads across the country. We have very few roads in the lower range, below 50%, and we have most of our roads in the higher range, which is really good. And it shows that Lake County does maintain their roads. So, and I've got like 10 zillion pictures to show that too, because they took pictures of every road that they drove on, every 25 feet. And we're doing really good, which I was surprised because I feel that, you know, they're not that good a condition, but I guess they're in a lot better condition than I thought too. So it's good news.
Would it be appropriate for us to have a separate work session with that information presented to us in February?
Yes, I'm trying to get that set up right now. They will do a complete presentation to the commissioners, go over all of the assets and, you know, let us know when we need to spend money. So for next year, we can start planning on roads that we need to, that need repair now and roads that are in that category of keep your good, good roads good. So, yeah, I'm getting that scheduled. So yeah, I'm getting that scheduled.
Okay, thanks, Michael. I appreciate it.
Yep, very good. Commissioners, do you have any questions on the purchase requests for the grader or the plow truck?
No questions from me, thank you.
No questions from me either.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the motor grader.
So moved.
A second.
Okay, any further discussion?
None here.
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And I will entertain a motion for the purchase of the, of the plow, apologies.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
None from me, thank you.
No, thank you. That sounds good.
Okay, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, all right.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, and then our last item of business before bills and minutes is the airport engineering services. The selection of the, sorry, the proposals that were received for the airport engineering services. Services, sorry. Michael, would you like to give us a brief overview on that?
Yeah, so in December, actually November, we put out an RFQ and requested bids. For over two consecutive weeks to get people to send us a proposal to do the engineering services for the airport for the next five years. It's required by the FAA and our grant assurances that we will have an engineer contracted to do these services. So we got four proposals. We got one from Armstrong, out of Grand Junction, Garver out of Denver, Dibble out of Denver, and Kimley Horn out of Denver. Kimley Horn has been our contracted engineer for the previous five years. So we did, we sat down with a five-member panel of people. We went through them and scored all of the proposals. Kimley Horn came out the highest with over 2,300 points compared to 1480 for Dibble, Garver at 1,300, and Armstrong at 1,320. So we didn't feel that we needed to go and interview each one personally, because Kimley Horn outscored everybody. So the recommendation of the panel is to accept Kimley Horn as our engineer provider for the next five years.
Great. Commissioners, do we have any, I don't have anything, any other questions for you, Michael? Thanks for that outline of the airport board review. Commissioners, do we have any other questions for Michael on the recommendation?
Just one on that. I appreciate that you went through sort of a formal scoring system. Just in case there is any question, or, you know, if one of the other bidders has an issue, just sort of request, or, you know, that we make sure those records of that scoring are kept, you know, for some reasonable period of time.
Yes, a copy of the tabulations and submittals will be retained at the Public Works Office for anyone to review unless the board would like them started in another location.
That sounds great.
I don't have any questions on this either. Thank you for assisting with this, Michael. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, great. I will entertain a motion for the direction of the airport engineering services to be awarded to Kimley Horn for the next four or five-year contract.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
None from me, thank you.
Nope, all good.
Great.
Another thing that I could, really quick.
Please, go ahead.
Last year, actually over the last couple of years, our airport has been going through the process of getting a new runway. And new tarmac and stuff, lots of improvements out there. Basically, it is a brand-new airport. I got word the other day, this has not been made public completely yet, but our airport won a prize or an award for the asphalt job that was done out there. So basically, Levee Lake County Airport, excuse me, Levee Region, name changed. APC Southern and Kimley Horn are all included in that award. So I will let you know more as I hear more, but good kudos for the airport.
Thanks, Michael.
Great. Thanks for sharing. All right, if there is no further discussion on the motion to approve the award to Kimley Horn for engineering services over the next five years, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you, Michael. Okay, let me try to pull up. All right, let's see. So that I believe is all for new business, correct commissioners? Could you make sure I'm looking at the right list? Great, okay. So then following that, we have reports, minutes, bills, and payroll. I will enter, I'll break these up into pieces as they are listed. So I'll entertain a motion for the approval of Veteran Services Service Officers' report for December 2020 and Public Trustee Report for the fourth quarter of 2020, as well as bills and payroll for pay period ending January 15, 2021.
Sorry, Sarah.
No, that's okay. I thought I paused, or we can break that up further if you'd like.
No, no, I don't, I don't, did you just say that you would entertain a motion for that? Sorry, you just cut out at the beginning of that for me.
Yes, apologies. Yes, I'll say that again. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of Veteran Services Service Officers' report for December 2020, Public Trustee Report for the fourth quarter of 2020, and bills and payroll for pay period ending January 15, 2021.
So moved.
Okay, I'll second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
None from me, thank you.
Okay.
Not for me.
Great. Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And moving along to minutes. I have, let's see, we have two, four, six, I think, seven sets of minutes. I can pull these up as they are in order of the date. And so there were a couple identified from our January 11th meeting that were missing, and the clerk did get those to us. Let's see, I'll start with July 6th. And I will share my screen. So this is a special meeting going into executive session for advice on the Southern Fire Station project. I did not have any comments on the special meeting portion of the minutes as drafted.
I don't either.
Okay, okay. I'll pull up the next.
Well, yeah, and I was just going to say, since I was not in for these, I was going to, I guess, abstain, you know, or, you know, I don't feel like I have appropriate comment.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner Fiedler.
And let me pull up the next, which I think is September 3rd. And let's see, this was another special meeting regarding the reporting of findings for the due diligence done on both potential Justice Center site properties. I had no comments on this.
I don't have any comments on those either.
Okay. Let's see, what's next? I think December 10th is next. And I think we approved, I think we approved these. There may have been another meeting that day that was questioned, but Pat, if you could just check if you, we included these meeting minutes in our January 11th meeting. And otherwise, I have no comments.
Okay, I don't have anything either.
Okay. And December 11th was a special meeting regarding primarily CARES Act funding. I think that this amount here was $25,000.
Commissioner Mudge, your screen didn't change on this last one for me, if you could.
Yep, just a second.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks for letting me. Okay, so the, this is for CARES Act funding, and I think that this $51,000, it should be $25,000 that was allocated to the school district?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I just wanted to provide clarity here, allocating $100,000 to the EDC or for the EDC to then administer for business relief. I just wanted to add that clarity so that it wasn't read as an additional $100,000 to the EDC.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't have any other changes here.
No.
Was, I'm not, I actually, now that I'm looking at it, did we allocate 83,000 or 86,000?
I believe it was 83,000, because we did the, I believe we did the same amount twice. And yes, I think that that is, that's, that looks appropriate to me.
Okay, I know, I think maybe Patty could listen to that again, because I think that that is, that was the intent. But I think I might have made a motion for 86,000. And I just want to be sure that we we follow that and that's clear. There was a question brought, brought to us on that from the committee. But other than those, that inquiry, I guess I'll highlight that question, and then this should be $25,000 to let's just say to the school district. I don't have any other comments. So I'll send those to Patty. Next set of minutes is December 14th.
Commissioner Mudge, this is Mayor Lavi. Can I speak real quick?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
That, that number was 86,000.
Okay, I thought that that was maybe the case. Thank you.
The 83,000 was earlier in the year, last year, when we split the 100,000 between the city and county. This latest one was 86,000. I don't even remember why, but from Lake County Community Fund. That's, that's correct. Sorry to interrupt.
No, thank you. All right, so we'll make that correction. I'm sorry, something's going on between all the apps I have open here. So let me know if, has my screen changed to the December 14 minutes?
No.
Okay. Okay, on this, this was a conversation about dial metrics and the discussion of anticipating the change where the additional funding source that was going to be contingent on being in level red on a certain date in December. And so I just have, I think that this here, when it said no holiday parties, I think this was, this is important, I feel, to clarify, because this was the only additional, more restrictive lever that we were going to pull from the red level while we stayed at the orange designation to add to the attempt to kind of curb exposure. Does that make sense, Commissioner Marcela?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Okay, so other than those two additions, I don't have.
I think we might want to maybe potentially add a little bit on the places of worship can't be touched. I think it's because there was a recent executive order that had come out explaining that places of worship and religious freedoms needed to be exempt. And so we, we could not, and it would not be appropriate for us to impose any further public health order or public health restrictions on places of worship because of that executive order.
Okay, so should I change this up here that says a law filed to an executive order? Change this language to an executive order is in place exempting places of worship from from certain restrictions?
Yeah, I, I think I can, I can go back and listen to that tape to get that language, if you'd like, to make sure that that's appropriate.
Okay. This is worship. Okay. Okay. Any other comments on the December 14th set?
None from me, thank you.
All right. And next is January 4th. The only comment I had on here was to be sure that Commissioner Marcela had not given any community information items.
I don't recall if I did or not.
Okay.
I can listen to that, the beginning piece of that tape.
Okay. And let's see. January 6th was a LCCHP meeting, and I had no comments or changes here. We had a bunch of updates from the group.
I don't have any comments on this set of meeting minutes.
Okay. What is this, 6? Okay, almost there. January 11th. This was the meeting scheduled to approve and review the last set of minutes. Let's see, I just had a clarification on my informational item regarding my informational item regarding the Division of Water Resources and, um, the communication that I got, um, that a letter was going, was scheduled, letters were scheduled to be sent out, um, a few days from that day on January 14th, not that they were sent out, um. And, uh, correction on the comments about the incidents in, uh, at the nation's capital, um, the incivility, not instability, um, I had commented on. Any other comments from you, Commissioner Marcela?
No, no comments from me, thank you.
Okay. I think we have one more. Did my screen change or no?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, all right. Uh, this January 13th meeting, um, was our first meeting as a new board, um, and this was a meeting going into executive session, for legal advice. I had no comments here.
None for me either.
Although, is Andrew, is that Andrew's last name? Let me see. It's a, isn't it Nick, Nick Clutchy, MC? Let's see, oh.
My name, L E T C H E, I believe, yep. My name right below that, Sarah, is, um, needs one more L. And then, um, I think what I would do here is, um, probably reference, uh, in the, in the motion. I think I just would want to, no, I just want to listen to the motion again because I want to make sure that, um, we, um, I, I thought that when I had read it into the record that it was reflected identically to how it was listed on the planner. And so I just want to make sure that that's recorded appropriately.
Okay, that, okay, entering in that this is reflected appropriately? Entering in just session, okay.
Yeah, just, um, because it was specific advice on legal questions, uh, related to a personnel matter, and so I just wanted to make sure that that was appropriately referenced on these minutes, um, because I thought that I had read it off the planner that way. And so I just want to make sure that that's recorded in the minutes.
Okay. Um. Okay. All right, so I did those changes. Um, I might suggest, uh, just to break this, January 13th approval out from, uh, our overall motion to approve the minutes, um, uh, because this is the only meeting that Jeff, uh, or Commissioner Fiedler, um, was present for. Um.
Sounds good.
Okay, I entertain a motion, um, to approve minutes from a special meeting held July 6th, 2020. Uh, the special meeting held September 3rd, 2020. The special meeting held December 10th, 2020. The special meeting held December 11th, 2020. The special meeting held December 14th, 2020. The regular meeting held January 4th, 2021. And the regular, and the special meeting held January 11th, 2021, with the changes listed, um, and yeah, with the changes and comments, um, that we've discussed.
So moved.
All right, and I'll second, um, and Commissioner Fiedler is going to abstain. And, uh, do we have further discussion on those? Commissioner Marcela?
No, none for me, thank you very much.
All right, uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, and I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held January 11th, 20, or sorry, I'm sorry. Best, the, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on January 13th, um, with the correction of legal representation, Andrew McClechy's name, and then Commissioner Marcela confirming, um, the recorded, uh, or the motion recorded, uh, to move into executive session as well as the correction of Commissioner Marcela's last name.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion?
None for me, thank you.
None for me.
Thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, um. Thank you. And that was a long one, that was a marathon. Um, we don't usually get to gift that to Mayor Labey, as they do. Long city council meeting, I feel for you, Greg.
I have to tell you guys, I'm driving to Arizona, so you kept me entertained.
Oh, that's impressive. All right, well, safe driving, um. Yes, uh, Commissioner Marcela, there was a, um, uh, comment, uh, brought up to me in the chat about the resolution regarding the holidays. Um, I'm trying to find. It appears that a few of them fall on a Sunday or a weekend.
Yeah, let's see here. Um, I had received, let me see. Okay. So I had just, um, copied the schedule for 2021 from the court's schedule from the Office of the State Court Administrator, um, and then did the, the same rotation, I guess you will, as we've historically done with Thursday, Friday for Thanksgiving. Um, the State Court Administrator's Office does Christmas on Friday, December 24th, and we did it on Monday, December 26th, which I just noticed. So we can, we can change that if, um, if you would like to. Um, oh, actually, I'm sorry, we did December 23rd and 24th, um, for Christmas. Um, and then we will a, a, approve and adopt this again in 2022.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I didn't, thank you for pulling up the calendar. I did not cross-check that, um, as that comment came up. So can you help me understand? Do you think the question is that the holiday falls on the weekend, and so they're just clarifying? Do, do we have the dates correct right now? Assuming that. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, let's see here, so whi, which one was the one that was in question? I apologize.
No, that's okay, I'm trying to find. It's a little hard to get through that. Okay. For 2022, New Year's Day will not be recognized. Oh, I'm sorry, and Christmas for 2022 will fall on 26th and not 24th.
We can, we can ratify that and change that for 2022 if you would like.
Um, why, since it's 2022, why don't we, um, just take a closer look at that, uh, next year?
In the fall. Um, I think, that's fine, Patty's, um, Patty's very good about making sure that she gets me, uh, that resolution um, and updates it for me, uh, for the, for the following year. And so I'll work with her in the last quarter of 2021 to make sure 2022 aligns with, uh, the State Court Administrator. So I think, um, I think logistically, it works out really well for us to do it that way because then it aligns the holiday pay for our court security deputies with, um, with those holidays so that there, um, there's not questions around that. Um, and, and aligns with our, uh, relationship with the courts really well, too.
Yep, thank, thank you for that, and, uh, I'm sorry for, for bringing that up a little, a little irrelevant. Didn't, didn't remember my comment was referring to the 2022, so that sounds great.
Yeah, no worries. I, I do appreciate it, though, and I will definitely put it in my calendar to, uh, work on that at the beginning of October, um, so that it's set for 2022.
Great. All right, and with that, I think we, let's see, yeah, we don't have anything else on our agenda, any other comments?
I just, I just have one quick comment, and I'm really sorry because I know we've been here for like four hours. Um, I, uh, I just want to clarify the purpose of the managing commissioner and board appointment resolution, um, because I think that there's been this, uh, misconception that we, uh, that for, for some reason that we don't, we're not tasked with managing the inter, internal operations of the, uh, county government functions, which is incorrect. And that is why we are hiring and proceeding with the recruitment of a county manager through a partnership with our, um, representatives at the Department of Local Affairs at the state level. Because this management structure just is not feasible. And so I think that there's a misconception that we are, um, elected to represent the constituents in our district and in our county, which is true. Um, however, we are not able to appropriately leverage, um, ourselves as elected officials because we are continually bogged down with internal management, um, which is not something that you would typically elect a county official for, or a county commissioner for, um, to manage department heads inside the county. And so that is, that is a driving force behind the county management structure that we're going to, um, so that we can create a continuity in operations. Um, so I'm, I'm, I just wanted to clarify that because I think that there's been this misnomer out there about it. Um, so that's an important reminder of why we're moving to that management structure is because it's more efficient county government, um, and more efficient service, um, delivery to our constituents. And so I think it'll help us not continually be in a catch-22 to combat issues every year when a new board is seated. So just, just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, no, actually, I mean, I, I have not been receiving, uh, it sounds like, as, I haven't received any negative feedback on, um, the intention to recruit, uh, and add that position to, um, the county. And the further clarify, I think, uh, yeah, it, it sounds like maybe folks are concerned about the, the, what they think might be a lack of then direction or policy implementation by the departments that is directed and, uh, developed by the board. And that certainly won't change, um, and, and frankly, could be better implemented, um, and pushed with the separation of, um, performance and personnel matters and staffing being removed from the commissioners, um, so that we can, you know, stay at higher level and look at that policy and kind of direct, direct those, um, those values for the community and for the organization.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure to take a minute to address that because I know that there had been some comments on our, um, our meetings, uh, through the course of the year when we had made some organizational changes with the airport, um, and, and that type of thing. And so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, now that we're readdressing that resolution once again, that there is an understanding that, um, you know, we are tasked with internal management of departments, and we do divide and conquer. And it's a very clunky form of management and administration. And there's 64 counties in the state of Colorado, and we're one of, I think, four counties that don't have a formal management structure in place to, um, accommodate for continuity in operations. And so, um, I just, I just wanted to make sure to bring that up, that this, you know, this doesn't turn into something that is political because it is not intended to be that way. Um, this is a implementation of management that has been carefully thought out and approached through a collaboration of local and state stakeholders, um, so that it, it is successful in the long term. Um, and, and then I just, I just felt like this was an appropriate time to, to just put that point out there with that resolution coming up. So thank you for giving me just a couple minutes.
Absolutely. All right, anything else? Commissioner Fiedler?
No, I'm all set. I, I appreciate, um, that discussion from Commissioner Marcela.
All right, with nothing else. Thank you very much, excited for, uh, the year to come. Uh, we will adjourn at 4:53 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.